All right, we're ready to get started. Thank you. Today is Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. This is the City Council's regular meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order and giving notice to members of the City Council and the general public that at this meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call? Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'd be happy to. Please stand if you're able.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Garcia, would you read our mission statement?
The, I'd be happy to, Mayor. Thank you. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Aslan, our land acknowledgement?
Certainly. Drumroll, please. I'm good at pulling these things up quickly. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, next up is open call to the public, and this is where the public can address the council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. In order to do so, you must fill out a comment card and give it to our city clerk. You have three minutes, and there is also another open call to the public at the end of the meeting. So first up, Colleen Maring.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Colleen Maring. I'm the Chief People Officer of Northern Arizona Healthcare, and I'm super excited that there's a packed house today with what we wanted to share with you today as an update, because I want to talk about a partnership with Coconino County, the, I'm sorry, the Coconino County Health Department and our harm reduction vending machine. So a few months ago, we purchased a vending machine that's right outside our emergency department here in Flagstaff, and with the Coconino County Health Department, they stocked the vending machine with Narcan or Nulaxone, the drug that helps stop opioid overdoses, as well as fentanyl testing kits that anyone can use to test a drug or a substance to see if it's been mixed with or tainted with fentanyl, which, as I'm sure you all know, is a drug that can be fatal in as little as one dose. It's outside the vending machine. You don't have to register, give your name, or go inside the hospital. You can just walk right up to it, and it's completely free, and you can take supplies, and we hope you use them to keep yourself and your friends and your family safe. Narcan can save the life and reverse or stop an opioid overdose in the moment, and stopping someone from taking a drug with fentanyl can save a life as well. So we installed the machine in September, and we, since then, more than 650 packages of Narcan and more than 400 fentanyl test kits have been retrieved from that machine. And we've heard through social media that we have community members who are saying, "I'm walking around with this in my purse now," or "I'm taking this, you know, around in my backpack at school," which we love, because our mission is to improve health and heal people. And we hope that through this partnership, we're able to impact the lives of some of our most at-risk community members, as well as our amazing student population, and I know we have many of them here, so I hope everybody goes by the emergency department and picks up fentanyl test kits and Narcan today or anytime. And if it ever runs empty, the county is restocking it as soon as it depletes, so there should be more there for you soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Phil Goldblatt.
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, and City Council members, my comments have to do with the future agenda item request today. I have here in my hand the entire text of Proposition 314, approved by the voters of the state of Arizona, as well as the text of the analysis.
Mr. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Can you please hold for just a moment?
Yes.
Sterling, yes.
The future agenda item request is an item later on the agenda, and the appropriate time for comments on that would be when that item is before the council.
I believe that his request is to ask us to consider an additional fair. Would that still need to come during that item?
No, no. It's on the fair that you're taking up today. However, I thought that that was not officially on the agenda, that it was something after the agenda. And so that therefore would be appropriate, I thought, to comment on it now.
Well, we are going to take public comment at that time.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you would be able to give this testimony at that time?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And sorry about that confusion. All right, up next, we have council liaison reports. Oh, we have another open call to the public. It's all right. Azariah?
Shalom. I have something I have to say. God has sent me here to tell you guys, so I'm going to say this. Hear the word of Adonai. I am going to send my messenger fire. He will consume the land. The high hills and high places will be devoured, and the tall cedars will be burned up. Then my name will be known as holy among the people. Adonai will fulfill his word. He will be quick in fulfilling it. He will not delay. He will complete it. He will cause ashes to fall like snow. Smoke will rise like a furnace, and the ruins will be carried away in truckloads. That is all I have to say. Shalom.
Thank you. Is that it for open call to the public? Yes, Mayor. All right, next up, we have council liaison reports, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two commission meetings this week, sustainability and tourism. Both of them were pretty routine. The agendas are available for review on the website. In sustainability, they had a pretty robust discussion over the code amendments that are being discussed also at the dais here on council, and that was a great conversation. Tourism was a nice update about all things that are going on in the Flagstaff region.
Thank you. And with the council's permission, I'm going to reorder the agenda and take council liaison reports now, because I see that I skipped proclamations and recognitions, so my apologies for that. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Thursday, we had our library commission meeting, and we heard a lot of progress being made, and here are some of the highlights. The Forest Lake branch of our library is working in tandem with local community groups to establish a volleyball court near the library, where patrons can check out volleyball equipment and play after they're done reading or checking out their library books. I want to give a huge shout out to Nate from the Fleet Services Management Department for helping out the new Bookmobile driver, Becca, to obtain her CDL license. The Bookmobile is now fully operational and making weekly tours around our northern Arizona region. Very excited, very exciting news for those who live far away and do not have access to the library. And an interesting factoid, more folks visited our Northern Arizona family of libraries than attended Phoenix Suns basketball games in 2024, I believe. And lastly, National Library Week is coming up this next month, I believe, and we will be reading a proclamation here, so, here at the dais, so we invite all the board members to come to that event when it comes. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. A week ago, we had our Mountain Line Board Meeting, and just to update the public, there is a parcel of land right behind the current administration and bus garage on the east side of town, six acres that Mountain Line is pursuing to go into partnership and turn it into affordable housing, maybe work first housing, so we're just investigating that and moving forward with that pursuit. Also, as promised in Prop 488, Mountain Line is planning for service improvements in August of 2025. Proposed service improvements include a 30-minute frequency on Route 5, that's Cheshire, extension of Route 8, West Route 66, to Woody Mountain Road, and modify Route 2, Cedar Hill, to permanently serve the Mesa on the eastbound leg of this route. The board conducted a public hearing and opened a public comment period, I believe, the other day. The public is invited to review the service charges and provide feedback through April 15th by visiting mountainline.AZ.gov backslash service charges. That's all.
And Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, I just wanted to further clarify with the tourism department. We did have a presentation from a community partner, the Downtown Business Alliance Executive Director Hunter, who provided the tourism commission a presentation, I believe he's provided many of us individually, about the vision for downtown and a budgetary roadmap for how to achieve a much more vibrant and much more living, prosperous downtown as we look into enacting our downtown vision plan. It was a really nice conversation. I think it was really great for him to get to that commission. I think he'll be, at my prompting, trying to visit with other commissions as well. It's a great conversation and very important to get all that feedback.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. I am the council liaison to the Transportation Commission, which meets quarterly. It has two committees that are very active and meet monthly. One is the pedestrian committee, the other is the bicycle committee. And serving both of these user groups in our community, I am happy to share with the public and the council the upcoming project for this summer to repave some 50 miles of the foots trails with asphalt. This will be a complete takedown of the existing asphalt trails and reprocessing the asphalt to put down a more permanent and long-lasting layer of asphalt. So that project is in the neighborhood of a $3 million project, and it's going to happen this summer. We can all look forward to nice, smooth foots trails in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. The Housing Commission met last week to discuss a couple different important topics. They considered approval for some utilization of the rental incentive bond program, as well as an extensive conversation on the last cap co-concepts and a conversation on working to amend zoning codes for, to address missing middle housing types. So a lot of robust conversation and looking forward to the future of those as well. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Real brief, there is a Metro Plan meeting here in council chambers Thursday, 1 to 3. Thank you.
And the Housing Authority had a meeting today and voted unanimously to support taking on the additional vouchers that council heard about, so it will be coming back to council for our decision soon. And these are housing vouchers, so that's pretty exciting to have 50 additional. And now we're going to move back to where we should have been, proclamations and recognitions. First, we have Girl Scout Awards and then Girl Scout Week. So if all of you would join us up here, the adults, the youth, everyone. All right, so we have a recognition for each of you, and then we have a proclamation. So if you will stay up here for the whole thing, after I read the proclamation, we will take a photo, and then if one of you would like to speak to the audience, you are welcome to do so. Did Lisa come up here? Oh, okay. All right, so the, each recognition reads, "The City of Flagstaff recognizes the dedication and perseverance needed to earn the Bronze Award from the Girl Scouts of America. The City of Flagstaff recognizes the significant leadership and community services provided by such scouts as they become involved citizens. The City of Flagstaff commends Alyssa Harrelson for obtaining her Bronze Award through Troop 6520 and recognizes her as a future leader." Who's that? "The City of Flagstaff commends Amelia Baumann for obtaining her Silver Award through Troop 6503 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Cecilia Metz for obtaining her Silver Award through Troop 6527 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Elizabeth Broadbent for obtaining her Silver Award through Troop 6527 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Ella Pugh, did I pronounce that correctly? For obtaining her Silver Award through Troop 6527 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Emmeline Morgan White for obtaining her Bronze Award through Troop 3170 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Lila Decter for obtaining her Bronze Award through Troop 6520 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Quinn Buzzard for obtaining her Bronze Award through Troop 3170 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Reina Bohem?" "Bame." "For obtaining her Silver Award through Troop 6527 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Samantha Brink for obtaining her Bronze Award through Troop 6520 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The City of Flagstaff commends Sonora Simmons for obtaining her Silver Award through Troop 6527 and recognizes her as a future leader." "The Girl Scouts of the United States of America, founded in 1912, is a worldwide organization that empowers girls and young women by providing them with opportunities to develop leadership skills, build self-confidence, and make a difference in their communities. There are over 160 registered girls in Girl Scouts in the Sunny Peak Service Unit, which extends from Sedona to Winslow to Page. Sunny Peak Service Unit sold over 60,000 boxes of cookies during the seven-week cookie season and will be donating over 10,000 boxes of cookies to local nonprofit organizations. Cookie season teaches girls five key skills: goal-setting, decision-marking, money management, people skills, and business ethics. During Girl Scout Week, we celebrate the achievements of the Girl Scouts and recognize the invaluable contributions they make to society as they work to create positive change in their communities, nation, and the world. The Girl Scout Organization continues to inspire girls to develop lifelong friendships, explore new ideas, and take action on issues they are passionate about, from service projects to environmental advocacy and beyond. Girl Scout Week from March 9th through 15th, 2025 celebrates the 113th anniversary of the founding of Girl Scouting by Juliet Gordon Low. Now, therefore, I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim the week of March 9th, 2025, to March 15th, 2025, as Girl Scout Week in Flagstaff, Arizona." Thank you. All right. Who would like to speak? Does anyone want to speak? Thank you. Thank you. We've got cookies up here. All right, thank you. If there is anyone here to accept the proclamation for Women's History Month, can you please come up? I don't know if they made it or not. Okay. Thank you. How are you? Thank you for being here. I am very honored to read this proclamation. I don't know how I can beat that, but I'm going to try. "The City of Flagstaff joins the national celebration of women's history and the contrib- contributions of women of every race, class, and life experience in shaping the growth, prosperity, resiliency, and legacy of our nation in ways both documented and undocumented. Women in this country have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every area of the life of our nation, representing a significant portion of the labor force, including enduring legacies in volunteer services, philanthropic and cultural institutions, the United States military, and in local, state, and national governance. We recognize that despite the continuing disparities in wages and opportunities they face, women continue to serve as leaders for their own rights and the civil and economic rights of others, and we honor the national call to reverse the years in our history for which the roles of women in shaping that history have been overlooked and undervalued. The National Women's History Alliance has announced the theme of 2025's Women's History Month commemoration is Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations, celebrates the collective strength and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership. Through their efforts, they have served as an inspiration for all generations, both past and present. Therefore, I, Vice Mayor Miranda Sweet, on behalf of Mayor Becky Daggett, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month." Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here and the acknowledgement. All right. All right. And so, there is a row, the third row has opened up, so if you're standing in the back and would like to sit down, there are several seats down here. The Girl Scouts have left the building. Okay. So, skipping over council liaison reports, because we already did it, we will go to appointments. And this is an appointment to the Open Space Commission, there are two of them. One expiring April 2027, one expiring April 2028. And please indicate which one you are appointing when you make your appointment. First up, we have Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several very qualified applicants to serve on the Open Space Commission, and I am pleased to announce my selection is William Bill Clouwen to serve a full three-year term on the Open Space Commission.
I'll second.
All right. So that is the, let me get back to that screen, sorry. So that is the April 2028.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would also like to give a huge shout out to everyone who applied and remind them to keep on leaving your application in there and keep on applying. It took me a couple of times to get my first commission here at the city council as well, and they were all wonderful applicants. But in that tough choice, I made one for myself. I'd like to appoint current Commissioner Lena Wallen to a term expiring April 2027 on the Open Spaces Commission. Congratulations and welcome to public service. Well, you know, you've been here before, but congratulations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're moving down to the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine unless a member of the city council expresses a desire at this meeting to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion. The consent agenda will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by council are budgeted items. So we have A, B, C, D. Are there any that anyone would like to pull? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We're moving down to routine items. 9A, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-09 and an ordinance number 2025-03. And this is regarding private pressure wastewater mains and services. So we have heard this item before, had a presentation on it, and tonight we are looking at adopting the resolution and adopting the ordinance. So, Council, did you have any questions for staff before we? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-09.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All.
Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
Mayor, no reading on this one. It'll be for the ordinance.
Oh, it says ordinance. My apologies. Okay. Next up, we have a motion to read ordinance number 2025-03 by title only for the final time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All.
Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 13-09-002-0012, Private Pressure Wastewater Mains and Services, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2025 Pressure Wastewater Code Amendment, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Moving down to Item 9B, consideration and approval of contract, the Fourth Amendment to the Design-Build Contract with Hunter Contracting in the amount of $688,880 for construction and repair services for the Inner Basin Waterline Restoration Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. David Peterson, project manager in Capital Improvements. I have a short presentation today and the last time, hopefully, that we're here in front of you for the Inner Basin Waterline. This is our closeout, our fifth GMP. Again, I just wanted to mention the stakeholders that make this amazing project possible. Like, first and foremost, thank the Forest Service. Matt McGrath and Aaron Mayville, the Coquenino National Forest has been paramount in making sure we achieve the permitting that we need and make sure that we, this one's unique because it's a city project that's completely done on Forest Service property. So that partnership has made this possible. In addition, with DFFM funding, which I'll go into here shortly, and then Hunter Contracting as well, which has joined us today, and Jacobs Engineering, and a myriad of city staff as well. And Hunter is here today because every time we do a presentation, I try to include some exciting news. So I'm not avoiding that in this presentation either. I would like to say that Hunter has submitted for four awards. Two have not been awarded yet, but two have, and they have won two of those awards, which Stacy BK is presenting council's award. So I believe this one will end up in one of the showcases out here in the lobby, but we'll leave this up here, come down and look at it as you please. But a monumental accomplishment for an amazing project. Stacy, Brian Huntsinger, who you'll hear from shortly, from Water Services on the Wildlife Drinkers. The three of us were able to go down in January to accept these awards with Hunter for the Arizona Chapter Building Arizona Award. And then several weeks later, they received the Penn Patent Luster Safety Award as well. Did you want to say a quick note, Chuck? You guys have made it possible, so.
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, council members, I just wanted to say it's been a real pleasure working with the City of Flagstaff and their, and the staff. I tell my guys that you don't always get everyone working together to solve a problem here, and that's exactly what everyone has done, and we really appreciate the opportunity. This is just an example of everyone coming together to, to repair that water line, repair the road, so that it'll keep it from washing away again. So, thank you, and congratulations on the award. It's yours, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, and team. Just wanted to go over briefly GMP 5. So again, this is with Hunter Contracting for a little under $689,000 and a time extension of 75 days. That'll get us through the end of calendar 25, even though we're expecting, as I'll touch on the next slide, expecting to close out the work here in early fall of 25. Weather-dependent, as many of you have seen up there, there's a lot of factors that we don't control up there, but anticipating what we can in the timelines we can, we're anticipating early fall. This list of sites here, I want to give that a caveat, there's 12 sites that we need to finish up. None of those are being constructed from scratch, so some of them need some more gabions, some of them need more AB, some of them need more opportunances to the water line and such, so don't get overwhelmed when you see the 12 on there. Something that can be overwhelming at times is the maintenance of the road and water line. There's a lot of dead trees up there that fall across the road, there's a lot of material, rock and such that deposits across the road. I would like to give a shout out to Flagstaff Wildland Fire crews that were able to unbelievably get up there last month and clear out a lot of the dead trees across the lower portion of Waterline Road. Surprising that they could do that in February, but hopefully we have a more productive March precipitation-wise. And then also, just wanted to mention that we have a series of requirements that we have with the Forest Service. We really want to maintain that excellent partnership that the city has with the Forest Service, so we need to make sure that we're closing things out in a copacetic way that allows them to fulfill their requirements as well. And I just wanted to point out, too, this is Wellhouse 11 on the bottom right side of this picture. This is one of the wellhouses that I shared maybe three presentations ago to council, where this wellhouse was filled halfway up with sediment, and then the pipeline, which is about the midpoint or midline of this road, was completely exposed. So now we have a concrete cap. Can't really tell on the picture, but these are concrete-lined riprap is what we call them, but essentially they're chunks of rock of different size that are anchored into the concrete. So when we have a flooding event in the future, it's going to come from the bottom left of this picture, cross over the roadway to the mid-right, and then drop back into the channel where it belongs, not in our wellhouses. I'm not going to go over all the dates of these, but these are all the GMPs that we've been in front of council with, starting back in January of '23. One I did want to point out here is the Inspection Services Contract. I know Guillermo Cortez with Ardua is here. At the time, that was SWI. Typically in capital projects, when we construct them, we have engineering inspectors that are part of the team that are going out there, making sure the materials that are installed are copacetic and in plan with what the designers intended to. We don't have the capacity with city staff to be able to get up there every day. It's a long drive up there and back. Sometimes we've had construction days of 18 hours, right? And it's a long time to be able to pull city staff away from other projects that we have going on in the city. So this required us to have an outsourced inspector up on this project. So that's one I just wanted to pull apart because it's different than the GMPs, which are with Hunter Contracting. Contractually, I would like to point out that the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management was reimbursing the city $16.1 million for this project, so I'm happy to report we get to give a dime back to the state taxpayers. What has really made this possible is the amazing communication of this team, being able to work with remarkable people accomplishing the phenomenal. And then also, Water Services has stepped up to take care of some of the things that have taken place outside of the scope of the burn scar of this project, such things as like spring catch basins, some pipeline damage that we had outside of the burn scar. So by partnering that with this reimbursement, we've been able to come in on budget. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments, and again, thank our Hunter crew and the award that I would encourage you to come look at, too. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions before I take a comment and a motion from Councilmember Sweet? Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. Hunter and team, thank you so much. Been on the tour a couple of times. It's just, it's, pictures don't do it justice, so thank you so much for just the innovative, you know, design, and hopefully we won't have to go back up there again. And Dave, thank you for coming in under budget by 10 cents. I think that's probably unheard of.
Not always the case, but happy to report this one.
Good job. And to the city staff team, I know it took a huge effort by so many people when we went on those tours. It's, it's a big group that goes out there, and everybody's so proud of the work, and we all should be. It's, it's the gold star. So thank you so much.
So Vice Mayor, go ahead and make your comment, and then Councilmember House has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, too, wanted to congratulate the team. I went out and did a tour, and it's very impressive. I mean, words can't describe what you all have been able to, been able to accomplish. And I just wanted to thank you and everyone here and who worked on this project. It is just quite amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. David and team, thank you all so much. This is absolutely monumental. I won't belabor the point of Councilmember Matthews and Vice Mayor Sweet, but just want to reiterate how substantial and extensive and wonderful this work is and how grateful we, as the council and the full community, I think it's safe to say, are for not only the efforts on this project, but also the expedited way in which you, you all tackled these things, knowing how essential this is to the future of our community. So, thank you all so much, and well done.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you want to make a motion?
Would be my honor. Thank you. So I move that we approve the Fourth Amendment to the Design-Build Contract with Hunter Contracting Company in the amount of $688,800, adding GMP 5 for construction and repair services for the Inner Basin Waterline Restoration Project with a contraction of 75 calendar days, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whose water bottle is that?
That is mine to stay hydrated with all the work that we're doing.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Item C, consideration and approval and ratification of contract for the concessionaire services license agreement with High Line snack and vending for the micro-markets and coffee kiosk at the airport.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Brian Gaul, Airport Director. Pleased to present to you today a license agreement for airport concessionaire services at the Flagstaff Airport. So I wanted to start off with a little bit of history about food and beverage concessions at the Flagstaff Airport. So some might remember we had a cafe in the terminal on the pre-security side of the TSA checkpoint, and some vending machines in the passenger waiting area post-security up until 2023. I know those vending machines were actually managed by the restaurant that was operating in that space. Unfortunately, that contract terminated in 2023, and we moved forward with trying to find some additional options for some food and beverage vending in the space. For now, as a stopgap measure, what we've done is we've added some city contracted vending machines, both pre and post-security. And in 2023, we actually went out for two different requests for proposals to try to find a new vendor for that cafe space. Unfortunately, through both of those proposals, we did not find any viable vendors that submitted to operate in that area. After the second those proposals went out, we did meet with some of the vendors that we expected to present, folks that we had heard some interest from prior to the RFPs being issued, to find out why they had not presented proposals for those, for that operation. And they mentioned some challenges specifically related to the operations in the airport environment. First off, the airport terminal is open 365 days a year with passenger traffic every day, so that was a little bit of a challenge for, for some of those operations. We did want somebody that could commit to being open all year. Additionally, the desired operating hours to catch most of our airline passengers were challenging. So on a typical day, we have a few departures between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m., which means those passengers are arriving at the terminal between 4:00 and 5:00 a.m. So having a restaurant that was open and ready to operate, starting as early as 4:00 or 4:30, and then continuing through at least the departing flights to catch the folks that are most likely to look for those food and beverage services, was a challenge specifically related to high staffing costs and some limited customers. So through the course of the day, on a typical day where we might have six to eight flights, you'll have large rushes with maybe 70 passengers in at a time, and then periods with lower traffic between that that made it hard. So after that, we kind of shifted gears and looked for a new option, potentially, to provide those services at the airport, and we issued a revised request for proposals in 2024 for an unintended food and beverage sales option. We did receive two options for that, and after scoring those, an internal panel of city staff scored those and found that High Line snack and vending was selected as the highest-scoring proposal. So, in your packet today, you should have seen a draft of that license agreement. This is a highlight of the scope of what that project is going to include. So it includes two micro-markets. We're going to go over in a little bit more detail on a few slides what exactly those are going to entail, but two micro-markets, one pre-security and one post-security, plus one coffee kiosk pre-security. I think that's probably the most exciting item for us at the airport. That's, I think, the number-one request we get is when we're going to have fresh coffee available at the airport again, so excited to have that as an option. And then, from a revenue standpoint, the airport will receive 20% of the gross quarterly receipts of that operation, plus an additional commission if annual sales volume exceeds 120,000 per year. Scheduled opening for this is pretty quick. It's a relatively fast turnaround, so we're hoping to have these in operation by the end of April of this year. So I mentioned that there were two locations. The first we wanted to talk about today is the pre-security micro-market location, which will also house the coffee kiosk. So this is essentially the same space as the previous airport cafe. It's directly- It's directly across from the TSA checkpoint. We did make some renovations in there with some of the grant funding we had in the last couple of years, where we removed some of the broken flooring, fixed some of the light fixtures, really cleaned it up, so it is kind of turnkey to add some equipment, no matter what the operation looks like. And I should mention, it's a separate project, but we are excited that we're partnering with Discover Flagstaff and the Convention and Visitors Bureau to open a visitor center on the opposite side of this space. So there will be a small visitor center operated by our Discover Flagstaff team, and then the micro-market on the opposite side of that, along with the coffee kiosk, kind of a shared seating area in the middle. So you can see on that map there, this is an overhead view of the micro-market being essentially behind what was formerly the bar counter of the restaurant space, and the coffee kiosk being a little bit around the corner from that. So hopefully, the queuing line between the two different operations won't interfere with each other too much. The other location is a post-security micro-market. This is going to be along the west wall of the passenger holding area, the secure holding area after the TSA checkpoint. We are hoping in the future to add a coffee kiosk to this area as well, though some infrastructure challenges are preventing us from doing that at this time as part of this agreement. Mostly, that side of the building doesn't really have any plumbing services. So water and some sort of drain is what's required to have one of those coffee machines there. Right now, we don't have that in the area where it'd fit in that facility. So we're hoping to find a way to install some of that infrastructure so we can host one in the future. But for now, it'll just be the micro-market post-security. So what exactly is a micro-market, and how does that serve the customers at the airport? So first off, the micro-markets will be stocked and maintained by Highline staff with some support from staff from the visitor center and from airport staff. We do have a rendering here of potentially what the micro-market will look like once installed. Essentially, it is a staffless vending option, where you walk up to the payment portal and you can scan your card. Once you've entered that payment card, it'll allow you to open the doors to the cabinets, and it uses some software to track what items people pick up and whether they keep them, because if they put them back, it doesn't charge them for it. But whatever items, customers can look at them, they can, you know, read about them and figure out if they want them. Once they close the door, the system then charges them for any items they picked up. So it's a pretty neat system that doesn't require any staff to be present. Of course, it is in a busy area of the airport, so we will have staff in the vicinity that can kind of keep an eye on it, but no direct involvement. Similarly to the coffee kiosk, it is going to be something similar to the middle image on this, where you do have different options for various types of hot beverages, coffee, hot chocolate, things like that. And I think it's pretty sophisticated. We do have some representatives here from the vending company, so if anybody has any questions, they can go in, I'm sure they can go into more details about what exactly the menu options include. But again, a staffless option for that coffee kiosk. And I think most exciting for us, the other big question we get from our customers a lot, is what we have in terms of fresh food options. As I mentioned right now, we do have those vending machines, have the prepackaged food, but the nice thing about the micro-markets is they can include fresh packaged food, things like fresh sandwiches, wraps, salads, fresh fruit, coffee. All those things will be available at this micro-market, and we can work with that vendor to really nail down exactly what items are going to be stored in that, based on the demand and the feedback we get from our customers. Additionally, it's another good place that we can sell some travel accessories. So we do, you know, in the airport, people get to get ready for their flight and realize maybe they left their charger at home. That's the type of item that could be also included in these types of kiosks, headphones, other types of travel accessories is something we'll also be considering including in these. And so, staff recommended action today is to review and approve that concessionaire services license agreement and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary contracts. And we're here for any questions. We're excited about this opportunity and appreciate you looking at it today.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions, Council? Comments? All right, I'm ready for a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve the concessionaire services license agreement with Highline Snack and Vending, Inc., to add two micro-markets and a coffee kiosk at the Flagstaff Pullman Airport and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'd like to second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks so much, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. So moving down to Item Number 10A, I am going to resume the public hearing because I did not close it at the last meeting, and I believe that we have a couple of presentations.
We sure do. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Took a deep breath, so I don't talk as fast as last time. So we're going to do this a lot more slower. It's going to be great this time. So, thank you for continuing that. Once again, this is for the Milltown Second Amendment to the Development Agreement. My name is Wesley Welch. I'm a senior planner with the City of Flagstaff. Presentation this time is going to be expanded upon a little bit, based on the conversations we had last time. The beginning is going to focus on the Development Agreement Amendment language itself. I'm going to have Kevin Fensell. He was a person who was kind of in the past development agreements and also was part of the discussion to get this one together. So I'm going to have him present that first, and then I'll follow up with the code requirements.
Thank you. Thank you, Wesley. Kevin Fensell, Deputy City Attorney. As Wesley said, I'm up here today because staff bribed me to be here and do some work for them. I was involved in the DA, helped with that, and I was involved in this Second Amendment. So I guess I have some institutional knowledge that I can help share today and hopefully get everybody on the same page before Wesley and the rest of the team jump into some of the details. But I'm going to go all the way back to the original DA on this. So we did enter into the DA for this P3 project back in 2018. P3, Public-Pprivate Partnership. This is the project that essentially moved the theater, the movie theater, out to the mall, moved ADOT into the movie theater, and opened up that property for two things. One, for the university extension, and then also for development of this Milltown property. So it was ADOT, the City of Flagstaff, and Vintage Partners, or VP Cinema, who was involved in this. That project, that DA, also included, obviously, a rezoning ordinance that allowed for the development of a specific site plan. So it was very, very clear when the entitlements were granted, and I have the entitlement section of the original DA up there on the screen. It granted Vintage the ability to build the site plan that was in front of council at that time in 2018, that was approved by council at that time in 2018. And that's what they were allowed to build. In addition to that, so we gave them that entitlement, so the ability to build that site plan for five years. So you see that in Paragraph 2 here on the screen. In addition, the Development Agreement also allowed Vintage to construct that approved site plan under the code that was in effect as of, I think it was May 2017. So that's this Paragraph 3 in the original DA you see here on the screen. And you can see it's really the first part of that that locks them into not only the zoning code, but other codes and regulations, and says, you can build your site plan and use that 2017 code for a period of five years. So the effective date of this DA was 2018, essentially extended that until 2023. So that was the deal from the very beginning. It's common that we do that. That is not a surprise, or shouldn't be a surprise, especially with a project like this. As I mentioned before, there were a lot of moving parts, a lot of partners, properties being exchanged, properties being dedicated. We knew this project was going to take some time. And because of that, the parties agreed to give that five-year window for Vintage to be able to build their site plan and utilize the code that they developed that site plan with. So it gave them, it locked them into that. In 2021, we did a First Amendment to that DA, and it did a couple of different things. But I want to focus on how it impacted that Paragraph 2 and 3. But a couple of things were going on. We wanted to make sure we were all on the same page with what the effective date was, so it talks about that. Also, the DA had road improvements built into it, so the extension of University and Beulah and that piece of the project, as well as the underpass. And Vintage was going to build those initially, but we always build into project or into DAs that if something happens and Vintage doesn't proceed in a certain timeframe with those improvements, the city can step in and we can do the improvements on our own, and then any share to be contributed by Vintage can be paid to us later. And so that's what we were doing in this agreement as well. So we were establishing that effective date, making it very clear. We were also saying the city's going to take over these transportation improvements, and then Vintage is going to pay us their share later on. And one thing I want to call out here is that amendment says that Vintage was going to pay an amount upfront, about $1.6 million. They've done that. They were then going to pay a true-up payment once the underpass is done, and they have five years to make that true-up payment. So assuming the underpass is done sometime this year, hopefully that's the case, they will have five years, so through 2030, to make that true-up payment, which is essentially the difference between the total cost of the underpass minus the $1.6 already paid and the $400,000 that the city committed to in the original DA. And that's important because when we get to something towards the end of my piece here. But that's, then the DA also, the First Amendment also said, we extended the five-year grace period to use the current, the 2017 code, and to lock in those entitlements, that site plan, for an additional two years. So at the time, Vintage was having, and you can ask them about this, they'll tell you, but I'll just give a quick summary. Understanding is they were having some time finding, trouble finding a partner to build the apartment complex on the Milltown property. Because of that, they were still looking, they were, knew that five-year deadline was coming up in 2023, and even in 2021, they wanted to push that out two more years. Council approved that through this First Amendment. So this First Amendment actually extended that five-year period to seven, putting it at 2025, December 2025. And that's really where we, and this is the language in here, you can see down here in Paragraph 3 where the city extended, oh, didn't do that, the city extended it for two years to 2025. So that's already done. That's essentially what we were operating of, that's what we're operating under right now, is that the city has already said, Vintage, build your current site plan, and you can build your current site plan with the 2017 code in place, and you can do that through December of 2025. So now we get to the Second Amendment. So in September, about that time, sometime in 2024, Vintage informed staff that they found a partner, they found someone to build that apartment complex. And essentially, that partner looked at the approved site plan and said, we really want to do something a little bit different. We want to, and they'll tell you kind of generally what they're thinking, but they want to amend that site plan. We sat down with staff and looked at everything and really focused on some of the agreements, and we looked at the rezoning ordinance, which I don't have up here on the screen, I can show it if you want. The rezoning ordinance is very clear. It says, Vintage, you're going to build the approved site plan. That's the first condition of the rezoning ordinance. Also, as we saw, and this is the amended language, but the entitlements were specific to a numbered site plan. It was very specific. This is your entitlement. You can build that site plan, and you can build that site plan, and you can use that old code for now seven years. Well, since they wanted to amend it, the first question was, are we talking a minor modification or something beyond that? And we're talking something beyond that. The rezoning ordinance actually says you can make minor modifications to your site plan, but after kind of talking it over with staff, it was pretty clear they were going to be outside those minor modifications. So they're amending a site plan. So now we have an agreement that says you have to build a site, you have to build according to the site plan. You have the ability to do that for seven years. You can use the code from 2017 for seven years through 2025, but it's specific to that site plan, and now we know you want to change it. So after looking at that, staff said, well, you're really locked into that site plan. So if you want to go this route, a couple of things needs to happen. One, you need to go through the rezoning process, and you need to do that because you need to change those conditions in the zoning ordinance. We're not talking about that today. That would be something in the future. But also, your DA gives you the ability to use your 2017 code through 2025, but it's specific to that site plan, and they still want to use that 2017 code. So we said, if you want to use that 2017 code for an amended site plan, we need to amend this language, and it's up here on the screen, in the DA, to make it clear that your entitlements, and we'll get to the next paragraph, too, but your entitlements, we're talking about a site plan that's approved or that may be amended and approved by council. The idea being that if you want to come forward with an amended site plan, you're going to have to go to council for the rezoning anyway. But we got to make it clear, if you want to use that 2017 code, that the extension that we granted before to seven years applies not only to the approved site plan, but the one you plan on, but your amended site plan, the one you're planning to bring forward. And then we built in, we want to make sure council has the ability to approve it, because you approved the initial site plan, so any amended site plan, council has to approve as well. And we decided that this is really, we want to do this first. We want to bring this to council first. We want to make sure council's on the same page, that if they're going to allow Vintage to amend this site plan and still use the 2017 code, we wanted to make sure it was very clear that council understood that was what was happening, the reasons why, and that we were going to build it into the amended DA, so that everybody understood the rules that we were playing under. So, if that were to happen, and this goes to the second piece there from 5 to 9, if this were to happen and council were to say, sure, go forth and amend your site plan, Vintage, and use the 2017 code, understanding you have to bring it back to us to amend it, and we have to approve that, go ahead and do that. I think last time we were here, Vintage said they would love to get in front of council with that project or that item in August or September of this year. If that were to happen, we'd have to, council would have to approve the amended site plan, and then we'd have to, if they approve, if you approve the amended site plan, you'd have to then rezone or go through the rezoning process to amend the rezoning ordinance. That can take a little bit of time. So their thought was, well, if we do that in August, September, couple meetings, then we have to go through the rezoning process, that's a couple more meetings, we're probably talking, hopefully getting everything done into September, early October. We have a deadline of December 2025 that we can use our 2017 code. So we just spent all these months amending our site plan, hopefully bringing something back that you like, but even if you like it, now we're on a real tight deadline to get through and start getting building permits. And that's really what that date is talking about. That's the deadline to get those building permits or get your civil plans approved. So they wanted to extend that out. So that's why you see on here from 5 to 9. It's already at 7. We didn't amend, the First Amendment didn't amend the language of the original DA, it just said what we were going to do. So this is really, no matter what, I mean, that 5 is really 7, and they're asking to go to 9 to give them that leeway to say, if council, we go through this process, if council rezones, if council approves the amended site plan, now we have some time to get it through the development process. You can ask Vintage all you want about that timing, but that's why they requested that number, and that's why you're seeing it there. The second piece, the development standards, all we're doing is cleaning up this language here. So the original language, again, said, you have a site plan that's approved, you can use all the codes that are in effect as of the effective date and the zoning code in effect as of May 5, 2017. This clarifies that really what they're asking for is to utilize the zoning code from 2017, but when they come through with their amended site plan, it's going to meet the current code, the current fire code, the current building code, current engineering standards, all under current, all other current regulations. So this just cleaned that up a bit. And I think that's it, unless council has any questions for me on that background piece.
Counselmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, if you go back a couple of slides.
How far back?
Forget it. So, worst-case scenario, and this will come up later on in the discussion, I believe, but you had stated that they're approved, their DA right now is approved with the specific site plan, specific DA, and they have till the end of this year. And all they need to, and it's a fight, right now, the project's five-story, with about 100, or 1,186 beds. If this was not to move forward, they still legally can move forward with that, and just as long as they get the building permits or the civic plans done by the end of the year, they could build that project, in theory.
Yeah. Yeah, they, yeah, let me just summarize that, and then you can tell me if I got what you're saying right. Yes, they currently have an approved site plan. I recall it being a pretty large building. Wesley can tell you all the details about it. They have that site plan approved, and through the First Amendment, this council, the council itself, gave them seven years for that entitlement to build that site plan, and also seven years to build, to use the 2017 code. So yes, if council decided not to approve this amendment and Vintage said, okay, fine, we're going to build the currently approved building, they can go through and build that they can go through and build that so long as they get a building permit or civil plan approval
For the end of the year.
December 13th.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Kevin? Councilmember Garcia?
This is really, just to reiterate, Councilmember Matthews's point. So if I was to vote no on this project, what happens is they just go back to the original plan that we just discussed?
They could.
They could. You get, that, that's a great question for Vintage. But yeah, that, that's definitely one of their options. I think they have other options, but that's one.
Well, good, maybe I'll ask it again.
Yeah.
All right, I don't see any additional questions, so thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. You said that much better than I could.
Excuse me, just a moment, did you have a question for Kevin?
No, it's a comment. I just, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that council has had a month to consult with city staff and our wonderful people that are working on this. So there might not be a lot of questions right now for city staff. That's because we've had ample opportunity to sort of pick their brains on this stuff. And I, I think there will be some more questions moving forward that are relevant and that either staff or Vintage could answer.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. So let me get back over here. So based on our conversation last time, I talked a little bit about the high occupancy housing, kind of the history, and also the history of Milltown. Some of these slides are going to be the same, and then I also have the code directly pulled. Yes, Mayor? Oh, perfect. So all of the requirements for the high occupancy housing code are found in the specific-to-use section 10406170. It was adopted in November of 2020 by ordinance, and then it was amended on 12/5. It did take effect, I believe, like three months after it was actually adopted. It was March 1st when it took effect of 2021. All the requirements can be found in the code. I pulled out the highlights. A few of them are that high occupancy housing and mixed-use high occupancy housing developments with four units or greater shall be located inside a pedestrian chediment activity center. High occupancy housing or mixed-use with four developments dwelling units or more, and that has more than 29 dwelling units per acre or more than 72.5 bedrooms per acre shall have a minimum of 20% of bedrooms contained in studio or one-bedroom units, and a maximum of 30% of bedrooms contained in dwelling units with four bedrooms or more. Few more requirements. If it's a mixed-use high occupancy housing, it should be located on a lot or parcel that abuts a street classified as a commercial corridor. It must have a building footprint no larger than 22,000 square feet. Requires the property to maintain compliance with the Flagstaff Police Department's Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program, and that a conditional use permit is required for all of those developments, and that they require adequate transit service available to the development site that meets the distance requirements of roughly a quarter mile. So a little bit on Milltown now. So it was approved for the direct-to-ordinance zoning map amendment, the P-plat, and the development agreement in 2018 as part of the public-private partnership. The approved site plan consisted of three commercial pads along Milton, and then the large housing development on the property. The component had 340 units and about 1,221 bedrooms, which would have triggered HOH regulations if it were to gain entitlements after that code was passed. The city adopted that HOH code on November 17, 2020, and it was effective on March 1, 2021. Timeframe for Prop 207 claims is three years, which closed the window in 2024. And I'll let, if you guys have further questions, we'll let Kevin speak to this. Vintage could not bring a claim for Milltown because they were grandfathered in, and they have what they could develop with that site plan it was attached to. So they were not ripe for a Prop 207 claim. The original DA was effective 12/418, and the entitlements initially expired on 12/13/23. Hopefully Kevin gave you enough information to know that that date does not matter at this point. The first DA amendment entered into late 2021, extended the expiration date for about two years. The entitlements expired the end of this year. The new DA amendment will avoid HOH provisions. The applicant did not request a Prop 207 claim, cannot submit. Their claim wouldn't have been allowed until late 2025. And just as a reminder, the project still has to come through the public hearing process for revision to the direct-to-ordinance zoning map amendment. Come through the rezoning process, it'll show conformance with any applicable specific plans, the regional plan, and it'll have to meet all the findings that are required of a rezone. I just wanted to put a timeline together based on some council direction that kind of shows you how Milltown happened and the HOH history. So this is kind of a summary of what we just talked about. I'll leave it up here, and I can also come back to it if we need to review it. So a little bit of code comparison. The big, between the May 2016 and then the current zoning code is that there were none of those high occupancy housing specific-to-use requirements. I reviewed it based on what they've submitted and what we've talked about, and pulled out what I thought was relevant. I do have the, all of the text up here, if we want to go back to any of it specifically, but I will not read it to you piece by piece. You're welcome. And then a little bit of comparison on the parking. So 2025 zoning code did add high occupancy housing parking requirements. You can see that that is more based on bedroom count and not unit count. The May 2016 zoning code is based on, is based on the units themselves. So 1.25 for studio, one and a half for bedroom, two-plus bedrooms are two spaces per unit. The 2016 does require guest parking, which is a quarter of a space for each two-plus bedroom unit. The HOH zoning code does not have guest parking requirements. Do we have any questions?
Councilmember Garcia?
So you were talking about the Prop 207 claims and how they can no longer get those. Are those, can they no longer get them under only the current code that they have?
I'm going to let Kevin answer this so I don't speak out of turn.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me go back to that slide. Because I think I want to just re, yeah, so Prop 207 claims, three years. Yes, closing window 3124, kind of accurate. Your claim accrues under Prop 207 two different ways. One is the effective date, which we call out here of the ordinance. The other is when it applies to the property, and it's whichever is later. So I think going to your question, we say we can, where we ran into this with Vintage was they did file a Prop 207 claim. They filed a Prop 207 claim, and we looked at it, and this was about a year and a half ago. And we looked at it and said, well, you really don't have a ripe claim here. And the reason why is because you didn't have, the changes that were made for high occupancy housing don't apply to your current project. The reason why is because, as we discussed earlier, they have to build that specific site plan, and they're locked into the 2017 code. So the position we took internally was, you really don't have a Prop 207 claim because that's all you can build. HOH doesn't apply to you right now. I think where, maybe in one of these other slides where Wesley was going, was that's what we told them, and they, we said you did not have a claim. But again, there are two ways your claim accrues. One is that effective date, three years from it, you have three years from the effective date, or when the law applies to your property. And we told them it did not apply to their property when they served us with their Prop 207 acclaim. It would likely apply after December 13, 2025. Does that answer your question?
To some extent. If I was thinking about asking them to follow more of the adherence to the HOH provisions, would that also open up opportunity for a claim?
I, I'm not going to get in, I don't want to get into that. That's usually what we would, I would answer that type of question in each session. If you want to go into each session, I can get into more of that. It's more my legal advice, so it's really more for upstairs than down here.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Do we have any other questions? I believe the applicant might have something to present.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Lindsey Shuby with Law Firm of Gammage and Burnham. Chivalry is not dead. Thank you, Wesley, for getting my presentation up here. And those were some good questions. I look forward to adding some additional clarity in answering any Prop 207 claims and what we think would maybe be in the future. But again, thank you for the continuance last month. I think it did lead to some, some good dialogue, some interesting questions. This is complicated. This is a complex project. This is the only P3 project that I know of that has happened here in Flagstaff, and therefore it is complex. Again, we processed this development agreement amendment at the request and in agreement with staff. And it is very procedural in nature. There is an approved site plan. Councilmember Matthews, the approved site plan is big. It's five stories, and with a lot of beds and a lot of units. Our request, we came to staff, we asked for a request to amend that site plan, and that's why we're here. And again, and I'll get into it, but the amendment will come back to council. The vote tonight gives us the right to submit another site plan that this council will get to vote on, hopefully in August. So again, regardless of what happens tonight, the owner does retain the right to develop, to develop Milltown and to get a permit by the end of the year. So again, P3, private-public partnership. I wasn't involved at the time, so we have Kevin, Kevin who's here. ADOT wanted to move their ADOT headquarters and their MVD from Milton Road to new facilities. The city owns some property adjacent to Milltown, or adjacent to the, to the ADOT property. They want to combine the property and, and partner with a private developer in order to develop a mixed-use project on this property. And Vintage was, Vintage put in an application and was picked for this development opportunity. So again, what were the important things that happened? The city was able to develop critical road improvements. I drove them again today, it's great. I think those improvements along Milton and University and Beulah will be great, and with the pedestrian underpass, great for connectivity. It also provided a new home, Northern Arizona Headquarters, for the ADOT and the MVD. So we leveraged this P3, this public and private partnership in order to achieve a lot of different goals. Ultimately, without this P3, we wouldn't have had all those things happen. So again, Vintage relocated ADOT, constructed a new Harkins, dedicated the roads in right-of-way, and also funded the underpass. I want to also make sure Mayor and council, Vice Mayor, Mayor or Vice Mayor, council, that also we haven't been sitting on our laurels. No one's been sitting around. As you can see, those road improvements are not even complete yet, and you need, those road improvements necessitate a mixed-use development at this location. So again, 2013, Vintage is selected for the ADOT partnership. Harkins 16 opens to the public in 2016. 2018, the ADOT headquarters grand opening. In 2024, the roundabout opens, and the, hopefully, we heard the pedestrian underpass will be complete at the end of this year. Again, the establishment of the new Harkins, 500,000 people and three times the sales tax revenue, which is great, great benefit for the city. With the new ADOT facility, as, as everyone always says, the best, cleanest, greenest type of redevelopment is adaptive reuse. Repurposing that existing building into the 70,000-square-foot ADOT headquarters today is adaptive reuse of an aging building. It is the greenest, most sustainable government building in Flagstaff because it's adaptive reuse. Vintage has done all those things. They're part of the, of the bargain. Again, the First Amendment, which came in front of you, was switching so the city could make the, the road improvements and extending the entitlements in order to build, to build the, the mixed-use project that we are proposing today. It's, it's a great improvements that are happening there. It helps the vehicular connectivity, but also the pedestrian underpass is a great improvement and will add to this mixed-use project that we are proposing. So again, why are we here? And I feel like we're reiterating, and I feel like it was lost in the first hearing. So again, Vice Mayor, the, the request on the continuance, and, and members of council who have worked with staff to answer questions. Councilmember Aslan, I felt like you gave the Jim McCarthy. We've asked a lot of questions, so if we're not asking them tonight, I feel like Councilmember McCarthy was, was always good at reminding everyone that. But again, there is an approved mixed-use project for the property. It is five stories with multiple commercial pads. If the DA amendment is not approved tonight, we will, we have multi, and as Kevin Fensel alluded to, we've got a couple options. One, we get a civil permit, and we build this building, exactly as is because we've got the right to do it, and we can get a permit by the end of the year. In the alternative, as was mentioned, Prop 207 has two prongs. Either you file within three years, we did, we filed our claim, we were told by your council, SEL, not CIL, that the claim was not ripe. Therefore, the second part of the statute says, when it is, I want to make sure I have it right, when the regulation applies, when it's applicable. It will be applicable to our property in December, December 13 of this year. Therefore, if this is not approved tonight, we will file our claims for any portions of the ordinance because it will be, it will apply in December of this year. We will end up in the same spot. The only thing we will have done is waste time and potentially lose a fabulous development partner, and lose the opportunity to bring what we are excited to bring, which is a future conversation, but a four-story building, right-sized, less units, less bedrooms. I can commit that to you.
Lindsey, we have a, we have a question from Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the three-P partnership. I was not on council at the time. So I was curious, did you guys just randomly suggest that these things should be made, should be done? These improvements should be better, you know, made so that way your development could prosper from it? Or was it a back and forth between you and the city that said, well, we're going to need you to kind of do this, and we kind of need you to do that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman Garcia, great question. I wasn't part of the team either. Walter Crutchfield from Vintage and/or Kevin Fensel who is part, but I'm going to tell you, they were lengthy and long negotiations. Nothing with your planning staff or legal staff happens quickly, which again is why we're asking for the two years. Not in any part, not, not faulting, you guys have a complicated code and a complicated process. But these road improvements were not requests, these were all part of the deal. Relocating ADOT, all of the road improvements, they were not, there's sewer upsizing, there's fiber optics, optics have been added. And Kevin, if you want to, in the P3.
But these are, but these are benefits that are going to benefit your property, correct? And, and we do take a long time, but that's so we can get it right.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I think to answer your question, and going off a ton of memory here, so Walter can help me. But really what triggered the P3 is that we always had a plan to connect Beulah to university. That was, that was in our traffic studies, that's traffic plans, that's what we wanted to do. The ADOT property was in the way. So ADOT property is sitting there, the old ADOT building was sitting there. And essentially, the question was, how do we get ADOT to move so that the city can come through with these road improvements and connect and extend Beulah down there to Milton? And, but ADOT had no place to move. ADOT wasn't going to go find its place on its own, so that's where Vintage came in. And really, it, the, the application, as Lindsey put it earlier, we put this out, I think it was an RFP, I'm going to look for Sterling to nod his head. We were looking for a partner, someone to come in and help ADOT move somewhere and open up that parcel so we can do our road improvements. And then part of the deal could also be that private partner developing that parcel that ADOT owned because ADOT had a big parcel or other than its building. And that's really what it ended up being. So that, why, that's why we call it a P3 or the public-private partnership because Vintage had to get Harkins to move first out to the mall to open up that site, to then get ADOT to move to that site, to open up their site. And then we had the Fresca's property behind ADOT that we contributed and combined with the ADOT parcel that was then transferred to Vintage. So Vintage got a parcel that they could develop, they had to build the ADOT new offices, they had to move Harkins out to the mall, and the city, we ultimately got our road improvements. So that's how the package worked together.
I really appreciate that. I, I, I just wanted to make sure that we, that I understood the point that this wasn't done out of charity, it was done so they could access their property and have it.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it was, yeah, I wouldn't call it charity, I wouldn't call it, you know, I mean, everybody got a benefit, I'll put it that way, right? ADOT got a brand-new office, the mall got a nice movie theater, the city opened up, got property opened up so it could build its road and its connection. And yes, Vintage got a parcel that they could develop. So yeah, win-win around.
I think it's a great project, and I'm happy with the outcome. Thank you.
And Councilmember Matthews, you said you have a ques, oh, you have a question now for Kevin?
Yes. I have some for Lindsey, but that'll be in a minute. And just because you're recapping the history, going back just another step, didn't this all start because we had didn't this all start because we had a citizen bond pass to realign university? Or a request?
The first-year lawyer.
That is accurate, yeah. I think, I think that's right. I think, yeah, I think we had the money to build the Beulah extension. We just needed people to move so we could actually do it.
Thank you.
The alignment went to vote according to Lindsey's first-year attorney.
Actually, Dan has some of the history on that. You can comment on that. Good afternoon, Dan Folt, Community Development Director. So the Beulah extension realignment of university was a project in the first 20-year transportation tax. So the first tax that was from 2000 to about 2020, 2019. And so, yeah, this was the last project that hadn't been constructed out of that first 20-year tax.
And let me confirm, your next question comes after Lindsey is finished. All right.
Okay, perfect. And great questions, Mayor, Vice Mayor. These are, these are all great clarifying questions. So Prop 207, I just wanted to add on that, you know, I see two options. Either we develop the building at five stories and Walter is a developer partner can speak to that. Or there are Prop 207 waivers filed to amend the code or Prop 207 claims that are filed and we're back in the same spot. You know, in conclusion, and Walter, I think, wants to make a couple of comments. But I just want to reiterate, Vintage has been a good partner. And again, it wasn't, Councilman Garcia, it hasn't been, it wasn't charitable, but it was a partnership. And a lot of money has been outlaid by Vintage to move all the different pieces to get to where they are today. We're not asking for special treatment. I've seen some allegations there. We're asking for a chance to bring forward a right-sized project for a vacant parcel. And the community and council will have an opportunity to approve this project, just like any other project, once Vintage and its development partner have had a chance to refine it, going through the, going through the process, as anyone else would. But this DA amendment allows us to amend our site plan to a right-sized project. It will be voted upon, hopefully by this council, hopefully sooner rather than later. Then we can get into all the questions about bedroom count, all those things. But I don't want to talk about that now because that is a future conversation. We need to go through the planning process like any other project. I can commit to you, though, the project that's in is smaller footprint, less height, less bedrooms, less units. We want to right-size this project. And that's, I respectfully request approval, but before I, I'd like Walter Crutchfield, he'd like to say a couple of words.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett and Vice Mayor Sweet, council members. I find myself at a loss for words, which doesn't happen very often. Those of you that have seen me stand here many times. The things I do know are this, that this agreement took over four years and 18 attorneys to draft between the state of Arizona, our attorneys, and the attorneys for the city of Flagstaff. It had never been done. It was incredibly complicated. And the only way to do that is to sit at a table and look across the way and say, we're going to trust and we're going to figure this out. And it was all documented, it was all done, and it was incredibly complicated. So what I do know is that people have worked very hard to get to this day. And I do know something else that's very simple. My grandmother, who taught school for 50 years, taught me two things. Consider others' needs ahead of your own. And keep your word. That's exactly what we've done. The level of attacks against my integrity and what our motives are and what we're trying to do is beyond the scope. A resume matters. You could say a resume doesn't matter for this project, but I'm going to tell you, a resume matters for a human being. If you want to know who they are, you look at what they've done. So if you want to talk about affordable housing, we've delivered. If you want to talk about cutting-edge Habitat, we've delivered. If you want to talk about the P three, we delivered for the state of Arizona. We delivered for the city. And now we come in something that should not be difficult. We have a million-square-foot project that we think should be downsized. And we came to bring a better project. But instead, people who advocate for the future are saying, we're trying to bypass and we're trying to get around and we're trying to do other things. My resume says that's not true, even if it's not accepted here. I invited some friends to come today. I want you to look out at them. Those are young people. Those are students at NAU, honor students. We're excited that they got dressed and got here on time. Way to go, guys. That's the future. If we don't start thinking about how we're going to house them and move them out of neighborhoods and put them in locations like right across from the university, then we will not have those students. I want you to think about an eighth grader right now who maybe has the cure for cancer and could come to NAU, but we don't like students and we don't want to house them. Why is that a statement we would ever want to make? This is complicated. Then again, it's not that complicated. If a big project can be downsized and fit within the parameters of what the city was requesting, some of the very people in this room were requesting, it seems like that should be pretty easy to do. I don't have a problem if people come forward and say, we don't agree. I have a problem when people come forward and say, this was your motive and you did this and you did this and you did that. And as much as this discourages me and as much as I want to quit, I want to be on the record for the folks sitting here, I will not quit. I will deliver affordable housing. I will deliver projects in this city. And I will not be run off because you attack my character and my motive. I will not quit. This is not that complicated. And I would ask you and urge you, please think about the future of Flagstaff. Good developers and good people bring good development. We have proven to be those people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
A couple of questions. I wanted to just expand a little bit. Walter brought it up. And I think it is important, we did get a lot of community comments and interest. And one of the things that we all want is more housing, more affordable housing. And I'd like you to just recap, maybe not take too long because there's probably a big, long list, but just remind all of us what Vintage Partners and some of the, under some of the other names, of the affordable units that have been delivered here. This is not Vintage's first project up here, correct? So give me just a full, you know, a little brief bullet point of the most recent stuff.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Matthews. Vintage Partners, in partnership with Capstone Homes, Roars, Habitat for Humanity, Live Communities, have delivered more units than anyone else. We've got single-family homes. We have 221, 60% AMI or less in partnership with Roars. We have 206 single-family for rent with a 20% affordable component. We have 220, the planning department's, market rate apartments, multifamily with Live Communities. We have 40 starter homes with Habitat for Humanity. We have, how many single-family homes? A thousand? 700. 700 single-family homes, detached single-family homes, and more to come. There's an additional phase of Timber Sky coming. And there's another exciting project of Tall and Skinny's, right? That's what we all want to be, Tall and Skinny. A type of townhouse project that's going to be delivered in Timber Sky. Councilmember Matthews, Vintage, in partnership with all of their partners, has delivered the most diverse housing types of anyone in the city of Flagstaff.
Thank you, Lindsey. And I wanted to ask you, we touched on it earlier. Yes, you do have the legal right, it's already approved, to build the five-story larger project. But if, but you don't have to. So what, can you speak on, can you share what your plan would be if we, you know, if this is not approved tonight? What would be your next step, do you think?
Yep, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Matthews. I think I touched on it a bit, but yes, we would either move forward and build this. We would get, we'd get a civil permit by the end of the year and move forward with this project as approved. Or bring forward a site plan, or, sorry, it was a question if I did or did not get approved.
If you did not.
If we don't get approved. If we don't get approved, we either move forward with this or we file Proposition 207 claims because it is now available to us. It's now, it's now the ripe, you know, to use a lawyer word, ripe time in December 14th of 2025.
And we do have a handful of applicants that have filed those claims for 207 that who knows what they'll pop up in the future to be and they're, they'll be within their legal rights. One thing that, you know, the speed of government is something that I always comment on because it just blows my mind. But going through all this, you know, the citizens, we approved a tax and this was the last project, as Kevin had mentioned. But these projects, these private-public partnerships are not fun. They're not easy. And so far, you've put out a lot. You haven't started, you know, on why you did this, to get a project done. And this may be why we may never see another private-public partnership in the future because this, it is really difficult and time-consuming. And so I just wanted to bring that up, that these are difficult times. And I appreciate that Walter stepped up and probably knowing the nightmare he was going to get into just in everything that's happened over these last 10 years or however long it was. So I just wanted to make that comment. And I know that we're not going to talk about site plans because that has to go through planning and zoning. It has to come back to city council. We have to approve that, so there's no fear factor right now of, oh, if they do this, they're going to run off and do X, Y, Z. That still has to be completely approved by, first through the P and Z and then by S. So right now, all we are just talking about is which path do you take? Do you go with the five-story building or just in December file a 207 claim and do this amendment anyway? Or do we approve it tonight, right? That's the bottom line.
Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, yes. We're going to proceed no matter what. You just heard from Walter. He's not going anywhere and wants to see this through fruition. And we would, you do not have the obligation to bring, to approve the site plan that we bring back for you. We will go through the public process just like any other development would. And again, I think that, as I asked a question, you know, HOH, I think, was brought in place for people who didn't have to go through the rezone process, right? But this will be a site plan that will be brought forward. It will go through the public process and you will get to ask all those questions then.
Thank you. And just for the record, one of the reasons why I ran for council is because I was tired of seeing all those five-story student housing, you know, monsters out there. So I appreciate the proposal to make this smaller because you do have the right to build that five-story monster that we all were protesting against, so.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. I thought Garcia was next. You caught me a little off-guard here, but that's fine. So Lindsey, I'll ask you this because you're standing there already. You know, just a quick preface, I don't personally have a problem with density and height. I think we're going to see a lot of that coming up in Flagstaff in the next several years. It's kind of what we're asking for, especially downtown. I think Flagstaff's sensibility around that topic has really evolved over the last several years. I, I, I think the fundamental concern is being mistaken if the argument on offer is that what we're trying to do is downsize for you. Because I don't think anyone has a problem with a lot of density. I was going to use the word monstrosity, but that would sort of negate the point I'm making. We don't see them as monstrosities. There's, there's a different consideration here in about-site plans. I do think that that's a little bit relevant. I've asked to better understand what the right-sized plan entails. And I feel like I'm not even getting vague details about that. I think it would be helpful if you could paint a picture for us of what a right-sized building might look like. And my question really is, what is it specifically that the builder is hoping to do that's different than what was already approved? And if the new project is less dense, less high, less beds, less units, what is it about the original entitlements that prevents that from happening?
So Mayor, Councilman Aslan. So I'll tell you, the current entitlements, you build what's there, including the architecture. And I don't know if we remember the architecture. There's a lot of rock, it's not very sustainable, it's a large footprint, there's wasted space. We did have a development partner at one point that could administratively approve units and bed count. We worked very closely with the planning department. But then the architecture was such a departure from what was originally approved, which by the way, smaller floor plates, more sustainable, better building materials, that it could not be approved administratively. Councilman Aslan, to make any modifications to this plan, to make it better, to update it, update the parking numbers. I would say the original approval has a lot of parking. More parking means more cars. I think there's also been a shift. I agree with you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. There has been a shift in council from the time that I've been working here. And it's great, and I look forward to continue to work with you and the evolution of sustainability of housing, of density. But I also believe there's a proper mix of parking, of density, of height, of all of those things. And therefore, in order to amend the site plan at all, the lawyers agree we need to add this amended, build the site plan or amend the site plan, the parameters are too narrow within your minor modification process.
Such as?
Architecture. Mayor, Councilman Aslan. We have to build the architecture. We brought forward a beautiful building with another development partner. I'm not going to put words in staff's mouth, but it was, it was pretty. It was prettier, it was more sustainable, it was lighter. It took cues from Humphreys. It was great. It was so different. Staff didn't feel comfortable making that change without council's approval. I can't, we can't make any of those changes without council.
So this is all about architecture and the facade of the building?
Mayor, Councilman Aslan, it's about bringing you what we believe is the best project. And we believe it diverts from the minor modification process, therefore should go through the public process, should go to P and Z and should go to council.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I know you don't want to go down too far the rabbit hole of the future, but I did have a constituent ask me about the commercial space. And, you know, in town right now, we have a lot of large buildings with empty commercial on the bottom. And I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about the commercial space, how we can ensure that won't happen? And maybe any potential people that are biting at the bit to move in there.
I'm going to, may I pass the baton to Walter Crutchfield?
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet. This isn't retail on the bottom, residential on top. It is retail out front, residential behind. That's the mixed-use type that it is. So we're not worried about retail being empty. We have significant demand. And we've had to basically say to everybody, you need to hold still until we can figure out the residential piece because our conversation with staff has always been, they've got to go together. You can't just build the commercial and then wait for the residential. And we knew that the market was shifting. And I do want to say, Councilman Aslan, to your question, it's been said- it's been seven years since we entitled this. And in that process of all the things that had to happen, markets change, as you know. We went out on a process and interviewed a number of companies, cut it to five companies, cut it to one, which is what we do here. We brought Roars. We have brought other people that are outside the market who have proven themselves, and so we bring them to the market. In this particular case, we selected Toll Brothers. Because we like their green focus. We know that they are the luxury home builder, but we knew they would pivot on this to be green, sustainable, and that's what we asked them to do. In terms of your question, Councilwoman Sweet, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. I prob, I apologize for that. You earned that. We, we have had LOIs and long conversations with Trader Joe's, with Portillo's, with a whole number of fast food and casual food providers, but we haven't moved forward on anything because we're trying to move the whole project forward. So we don't really get the luxury of splitting it up and then just talking to a tenant. Which I think is sad because if we could get this done, then we could go to, for example, a Trader Joe's and say, we're ready to go and begin to move this forward. So does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, I have a question, I, I believe for Kevin, if you are comfortable answering this. Without getting into advice, will you just share what Proposition 207 is?
Yeah. Off the top of my head, you want me to quote it? Essentially, what Prop 207 is, is it's, it's about diminu- diminution in value of private property. Oh, Lindsey has it for me here. It essentially says that a private property owner, after a, a local jurisdiction like the city passes a land use law that allegedly diminishes the value of their property, they can come in and make a claim for that diminution in value. So they can come in and say, hey, you just passed this new ordinance. It requires me to do X, Y, Z. Or the better example is, I was previously allowed to build a five-story building. You just changed my zoning and now I can build a three-story building. So that diminished the value of my property. And then the city has some choices. We can either pay the diminished value of the property or what we commonly do in a lot of situations is we can grant a waiver. And that waiver essentially says, this new land use law that we just passed that said you can build only three instead of five stories, doesn't apply to your property. And that is, goes on in perpetuity. And that, so that new land use law wouldn't apply to that individual's property.
Thank you. Now, I have a question for Wesley or anyone else on planning staff. Can you, can you help us understand where this has happened in, in other projects in terms of the amending the development agreement?
This is my first development agreement, so I'm going to let someone else speak to that.
I figured you were probably going to call.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. What, what's the question?
The question is, the city, the city of Flagstaff, has done development agreement amendments before, right? And I don't need to know which projects, but I would just like staff to address what the instances were, what that looked like. And I would also like, we've had a couple of people say this sets a dangerous precedent or it is a slippery slope. And I'd like staff to address that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just give you an example, real quick one, and that's Canyon Del Rio. We just did that one. So Canyon Del Rio, we had a development agreement with them. Oh, I can't remember when we entered into it, a long time ago. But JWP is now going through Canyon Del Rio. So the JWP extension going through their property required us to go in and amend that DA and change some things in that DA to allow for that road to go through and then, of course, all the other provisions that go along with it. Timber Sky was amended multiple times. I think one was, the most recent one was to allow Roars. I think that was to change the affordable, affordability provisions so that Roars could come in and build the apartment units that they are building right now. So. Habitat, yeah, and allow Habitat. So, yeah, I think there, we, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty common to amend a development agreement. Things change, situations change. So, yeah, we oft, I don't know how often we do them, but, yeah, it's pretty common to amend DAs and come into council and say, hey, something happened, something's a little bit different. We need to amend this DA to account for it. Or infrastructure changes, yeah. But those are a couple of examples.
And maybe I should have asked specifically for, and I don't know if this happens as often because codes don't necessarily change so drastically, but do we have examples of where an existing development agreement has been amended to allow for a previous, for the code that was in place when the development agreement was created?
So the best example here is the First Amendment did that. But beyond that one, I can't think of a one off the top of my head where we had to extend that provision that locked them into that code to give more time. I think a lot of the times what happens is you have the developer go in and they start constructing. And once they start constructing, they get that first building permit, they get those civil plans approved, and they're locked in that way. This one, I think, was obviously a little bit different because of the different moving pieces of it. And, and again, I think Walter can talk about this in more detail if you want, but just there were some, definitely some pieces that had to come together and then they had to find the partner to build it and set them back. So council, like I said, approved the First Amendment in 2021 to extend it out from five to seven. And now we're here, really focusing on just the ability to amend the site plan using that current code. And then also the secondary request of, if we go down that path, we're gonna need a little more time because that December deadline's gonna come up pretty quick.
Is staff aware of any other, of any other development agreements that are in the same place where they were created under a previous zoning code?
I think most, trying to think of, I thought CDR had a prior zoning code. We had a provision in there about locking them in. And I can't remember off the top of my head. Which one? McMillan Mesa. Has a specific plan we relied on. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, it's hard to do off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look at the DAs. I will just tell you that locking the developer into a certain code is not rare. I mean, Lindsey will just, she's chiming in in my ear, but she'll say that down in the valley, you know, 10 years, locking it for 10, 15 years is not uncommon for a P3, according to Lindsey. You can test her on that if you want. But that's what she's telling me. So we're at five, we were initially at five. We've extended to seven. Now the ask is to go to nine. So that's where we're at here.
Okay. But staff isn't aware of any other development agreements that are out there that aren't already, where the, the project isn't already moving forward? Or not, or stalled? Any other development agreement where they don't, where the project's not moving forward?
Yeah, you wanna, I can't think of one, but that doesn't mean they're not out there. Just I can't think of one off the top of my head. I don't know if Michelle has a comment, but, no? Yeah.
None? Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Daggett, I would like to speak to that particular issue. You don't have any other development agreements related to a, a public-private partnership. So in this case, you've got multiple entities that are delivering and doing, not a single developer entity, city, in that process. You have the state of Arizona, city of Flagstaff, and Vintage at the end of all those other machinations to be able to do that. I also would like to point out, in 2021, when we amended the development agreement, the city desired to build the road. There were a whole number of reasons for that. And the city, obviously, has done a fabulous job building the road. But there was a way that they wanted to process that. And so we thought, if you wanna build the road and this is, and they, and they really did, we said, okay, well, let's amend the development agreement so you can build the road. And we'll deed that, well, it's not a deed, but it was giving you that right because that's what the city wanted to do, which then also extends timeframes. Obviously, if we didn't have the timeframe extended, we could have worked under the extension we had, but we obviously have burned through that time, so.
Thank you. All right. Okay, I see Councilmember Spence. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. Lindsey, I wanna go back to the conversation that you were having with, a few minutes ago, about what this current DA amendment doesn't allow you to do. And we kinda went down a rabbit hole on the architecture. But that's not the reason why you want this amendment change, correct? I mean, that, that's, if I understood you right, you were giving an example of how you couldn't even change, if you kept it five stories, you couldn't even change the outside look.
Correct. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, we want to amend the site plan. We do, we, and, and I agree with Councilman Aslan. There's a, there's a certain amount of density and cars and people and multimodal that all belong here. We wanna update it. Exactly what that looks like, I don't know. But it does require an amended site plan. And this development agreement gives us the opportunity to amend the site plan and get back in front of you.
So this has been going on since, what, 2017?
Correct.
And so far, what has Vintage Partners gotten out of it? I know you've spent a little bit of money, but.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, Vintage has spent a lot of money and they have gotten absolutely zero in return yet on this project. In the meantime, it has been a privilege to work with the city on Timber Sky, on all those other diversity of housing options and bring those to the city. On this project, and they are all separate entities. I think that's important to understand too, right? You have a different fiduciary respe- Walter is the face who you see, but I will tell you, he has partners back in the office where, you know, Walter promises all these lovely things, like donating three acres to Habitat to Humanity. And I get a call on the way home, Walter did what? I, I, it's between you and your partner. As far as this entity, Vintage has received nothing in return and is looking forward to developing a project that council can vote on, the community can be a part of, but bringing a, a great mixed-use project to a currently vacant, underutilized piece of dirt.
And I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring that up because I think there is some sentiment out there that, you know, we're, we're giving, you know, Vintage a lot and you've put out a lot so far. And hopefully you'll get some good returns, but currently not. And I am really personally pleased that we've also had a lot of, surprisingly, comments on less parking because I, you know, that's my, you know, focus is not going to less parking. And there's a big school of thought that that's where we need to go, is to not require so much parking. So I was so thrilled to see that the community really doesn't want that. Or at least the community that's been communicating to us. But the current DA, the current project that's approved, as it stands, is student housing, correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is no land use category in your code or anyone else's called student housing. There's not. That, is it approved as a mixed bedroom, a combination of studio to five-bedroom units with shared space? Yes, it is. This project will be similar but different, a stronger emphasis on studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and a decrease in four- and five-bedroom units. There's no such thing as student housing, but it is approved with a high number of four- and five-bedroom units.
So are you saying that if young entrepreneurs wanted to, I had rented my upstairs last year to, to coworkers. They weren't couples or anything. They were just wanting to share a space. They each had their own bedroom, shared a common place. So if, if there was an entrepreneur, you know, group that came in and said, you know, we wanna rent this three-bedroom, if, I don't think there's gonna be three-bedroom or four, you wouldn't, would you turn them away, or?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, no, we would not turn them away. This is an opportunity for, you know, a, a group of, of kids who work at the Toasted Owl. I don't wanna say kids. Toasted Owl is lovely, though. It's an opportunity for traveling nurses. I mean, this is the ultimate lock-and-leave. It's, it's furnished. It's an opportunity for new engineers that, that are coming to Gore, who wanna figure out where in town even they can live, find any type of inventory. This absolutely is a multi, it's a multifamily project that can have zero age discrimination. Anyone can live there. Now, due to its proximity across from NAU, will there be students that live there? I would think so. We've got a great pedestrian underpass funded by Vintage. And, and, but it, it is open to anyone, traveling nurses, people in the retail space. Again, I've always said Councilman Shimoney should have lived in one of these places. He would have been in charge of the whole place.
So really, this is just how I understand it, and, and I'm still learning, but the walkability of this project, you have Target, you have restaurants, you have stores, you have fast food. This is the direction we're wanting our city to go in, where people don't have to drive their car to get to, to take care of their basic needs, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, absolutely. And again, the concept plan that's in, that's in and under review now shows a small grocer footprint, a sit-down restaurant with a drive-through. I mean, this is the ultimate multimodal project that we are trying to bring forward.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. This is a great discussion. Thank you, Lindsey. So, you know, I do believe that we are addressing a lot of housing types and, and we need all types here in Flagstaff. And I just wanna circle back a little bit to affordable housing. I know you can't predict the future on this development, on what we're gonna be looking at. But I am wondering if you can reiterate, again, the affordable housing that Walter, Vintage, has brought to Flagstaff? And anything that you see in the future that might be coming to Flagstaff? I know we can't tackle affordable housing, maybe in this development. I hope, and I will bring it later, that we have it. But how else is Vintage helping Flagstaff tackle this problem? Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, great question. And I'm sure Walter's gonna wanna jump in, but I'll tell you, the current development agreement, at the age and stage of when it was approved, again, I, I wasn't part of it, brought, you know, a number of units. There were some exterior-facing units and, and the period of time was, was pretty short. I think those of you on council would agree. We do wanna look at what affordable means now. And, you know, like I said, with the 221 Roars units, I know of other, you know, the, the Lake Mary project that was just approved had 20%, 10%, 20%? I can't, it wasn't my project, so I can't remember. But it did have an affordable component. Sky Cottages, which is a single-family to rent, had an affordable component. I think there's probably a bigger impact that, that we can make, and we wanna look at that. We wanna be creative. Walter wants to come to the table and come up with something interesting. So Vice Mayor, good point. That may be a portion of the development agreement that when we bring back our site plan through the rezon process, that we will request.
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet. What we did on the original Milltown was negotiate from the DAS, which I don't think is the most thoughtful way to think about affordable housing. I think sometimes with affordable housing, you put your best foot forward. You try, as I have said to you in the past, with Community Land Trust, and then you pull back and say, no, this is a better solution, directed by some of you. And we did that at Timber Sky. In this particular case, we had originally committed to 21 affordable units and they were tied to whatever the studio value was. Wasn't well-thought-through and it was negotiated on the fly. And I believe it had a 10-year limitation. We've already started and hope to complete in 2025 the 40 Habitat for Sale homes at, at Timber Sky, but we have 670 people who have applied for the first 10 houses. So obviously, the demand is far larger than 40 homes are going to be able to deliver. So obviously, the demand is far larger than 40 homes are going to be able to deliver, plus a 10-year limitation on affordability here, even though that's what's in the agreement, and I guess I could just duck behind that. We don't think that's the best approach. We think the best approach is to reload with Habitat, and our development partner is preparing that process. We were, we, we hope to be able to announce that, but I can be 100% honest with you. Our development partner's in the room, and this venue is difficult, and they've seen and heard quite a bit. I had developers call me this week and say, Walter, if it's this hard for you, who've done all this, we're just not coming to Flagstaff. That's fine, I'm here, and there are a lot of other good people here that are developing. We think the right solution here is to take the support and put it towards the next 40 Habitat homes, and we hope to be able to bring that to you when we come to P&amp;Z and when we come back to council. That's our intention. But now it's public because I said it here, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sweet. That was exactly where I was headed with my next question, was wherever the affordability component was, because I know, Walter, that you've done so much with Habitat, I didn't know if it was going to be like an off-site deal, and you kind of summed that up now. Now, taking back to when you first came up, Walter, I, I hope you weren't speaking to members of the council when it was talking about challenging your character. You seemed very impassioned, and I was a little bit confused, and, and I felt, I felt bad if you took something wrong from us, because I, I think that this is a really healthy discussion. And, and I would like to add, if the developer is in the room, that well-thought-out plans come out with the best results, so at, at least we're, you know, getting there. At least we're getting there. During my, the last month, when I was trying, going through town, or when I had some free time, I would stop at some of the other quote-unquote "student housing" complexes to kind of interview folks coming in and out. And 90% of the, it was a very small sample size, I'll tell you that, because, you know, people thought I was weird to begin with, with a clipboard out front, doing things on the fly, but that's just how I roll in this town, you know? And I want to ask, or answer to my questions, I go ask the people who are living it. So what I did was, about 90% of the folks that, that I asked were students, and they were okay with the living situation. But I did, I did run into those between, I think, the ages of like 28 and 38, that were living in those shared living spaces, single-bedroom accommodations, and, and some of them were, were from all walks of life. And, and I didn't get the best, the best report from those that weren't students. They had to, they were kind of forced into those situations, and I know I didn't talk to everybody, but what, the point I'm trying to make here is, I think we will hear this in the commentary, but we're missing a huge middle of housing, and, and I think when we're up here at the dais, that's what we're trying to speak to, is, is, it's all good for the students as far as, you know, I could tell by being out there on the street, but those who are kind of forced into those situations weren't happy, and weren't able to save because of the prices of these one-bedroom place, uh, units, and they didn't have privacy, and they didn't have, like, things that adults should have. So, so, so I'm hoping through this process and what you bring back, if that's what's decided up here at the dais, that, that you speak to that missing middle a little bit for us. And I'll just leave you with, with a point, with an antidote, I guess, that my, my daughter in Texas lives in one of these style of buildings. I mean, it's off-campus, it's privately owned, they serve her breakfast, lunch, and dinner even, and it works really well for her, and we're really happy that she's there. She's, she's really well taken care of. So, so when the student component in these situations, I'm completely on board with, because I'm living that experience, but those folks that I talked to that were kind of not forced into these situations, but they had to live somewhere, weren't as happy, and I, I, I want to provide housing for, for that middle housing, for those people to have opportunities to have that privacy and that adult life.
100%. Mayor Daggett, Councilmember Garcia, excellent point, and I do want to say at the front, I am very passionate about this. I got a number of calls this week of people that said, we support you, but we're afraid to come out and speak. It shouldn't be that way. Now, there's a whole bunch of reasons for that, and we don't have to blame anyone for that, but it shouldn't be that way in a community. It should be conversations. You get to the best development project when there are trusted conversations. You do not get to the best development project when people make accusations. That has not been my experience with this council. This council has been passionate to represent the citizens of this city, dogged in their questions, but always gracious. So if, if I came off that way, please forgive me, that was not my intention. But I am passionate about this, and I do, and I am passionate about my word, and about what we do and how we deliver. To your question, no single type of housing can meet the broad spectrum of needs. In this particular case, what we're seeing around the country is multiple-bedroom situations are being used successfully for students, grad students, which there's a huge dearth of housing for grad students, for NAU students, and then first-years. You know, Gore, I talked to the different leaders of, in town, and they don't have housing for their people. So is it the best situation? No, but the way I think we can assure a situation where your daughter's situation is great, and some of the people you talk to not as great, it's the quality of the company that is managing that project, which is why we went out, interviewed, cut it to five, and then cut it to one. We think we have the best builder-manager that will provide the best environment, where it will be a holistic place for everyone who chooses to live there. My further answer would be, even at a discount, those one-bedroom, shared in a three, are more expensive than the payment at Habitat. The better option is equity. The better option is a 38-year-old or a 20, 30-year-old who's working, is getting them into a position where they can gain equity, which means we have to build more Habitat homes, not less. We have to look for every single place we can build them. We need to go back and look at all the land that the city has and say, can we put Habitat homes here? We have a development team, they've worked pro bono, they're going to continue to work pro bono, we've raised all the money for the first 40, we're ready to go for a continuous use of that. But that's a much better use, because what happens to that 28-year-old is, they get discouraged and they leave. And if we lose young people and young families, we're no longer a community, we're just a place where older people have it the way they want. And that's not what we need. What we need is a vibrant community where everybody can be housed.
Thank you.
All right. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Very excellent discussion. I thought I would attempt to distill a few things, takeaways from the discussion tonight. Prior to getting into public comment, I'll be brief. I know we have a lot of participants and attendees tonight who want to speak to this. The P3 project here started many years ago, and there's been a lot of performance on that project on behalf of the developer, and I don't want to belabor, again, what, what has been stated. These are significant improvements, off-site improvements. I was at the ribbon-cutting for the ADOT facility, it was one of my first events here, arriving to the town, shortly after meeting Mr. Crutchfield. It was wonderful. And, you know, seeing the progression of the, the off-site improvements, the relocation of the theater, the opening of ADOT, the underpass that's now being built, and Beulah, and we're very excited about that. These are all significant endeavors, to say the least. The comment was made tonight, P3s are complicated, and they are, and this is a complicated project even without the partnership. It is that complication and all the things that we've talked about that has spanned several years in, in this process. And as has been noted, you know, there's, there's been progress, it hasn't been stagnant. I think the, if I was to distill all of this, it is a question of timing, it's a question of process, and timing underlies process. We're at the end of that seven-year period in December, there's a lot of performance yet to be done in terms of the construction of the residential facility and commercial And the, the question is, what's the best way to navigate forward with allowing enough time? Those are the extensions that are being requested, I won't comment on those, but process-wise, what makes the most sense? I want to share with you that staff, the attorneys, our office, my office, we agree with this process. It makes sense. It's simple, and there's an element of fairness to it, in my opinion, and that fairness is, it's tying back to the same code that was applicable when all this started, when all the performance was commenced, and it, it does make sense, frankly. I think the, the concerns, and of course, we, we are cognizant of the, of the concerns, are policies being circumvented, are we sidestepping HOH and other things, pardon me? By doing this, the answer is no, not at all. We are keeping the process simple and in line with what was envisioned many years ago. All the site development, it comes to this dais, and there will be a lot of discussion of that when it happens. It'll be, be very transparent, and nothing will be circumvented policy-wise. In terms of the HOH, I wanted to still a takeaway that we've heard now a couple of times, I just want to maybe perhaps give it some emphasis. The high occupancy housing policy and policies like that are now subject to Proposition 207. This council, the council before it, and the council before that council, has entertained many claims under Proposition 207, and has provided waivers on most of those, after considerable discussion and deciding it was in the community's interest to move forward rather than to litigate these things in court at very costly attorney fees and time, and, and not a lot to show for it, frankly, that, that, it's in the community's better interest to move forward on these things without making decisions in the courtrooms and seeing development occur under the best plans that, that we, we can negotiate. And there's been a lot of negotiation on this plan, and should there be approval, there will be more discussion on the site plan that comes forward. Again, will be a transparent process. Knowing now that Proposition 2, our 207 claims are imminent if this is not approved, and that is one of the two options that can be pursued, one is to build as approved, the other is to wait till December and go through the Proposition 207 claim process, the HOH will not apply then either. So what has been gained between now and then, what, what has been lost will be several months. I'm not sure what will be gained, because some of the concern about, again, circumventing policy, will be a nullity come December, that the 207 claims will, will be filed, we know that now, we're hearing it, and we've seen it before, and that will be the outcome. If the underlying premise behind a high occupancy housing is to scale down on large buildings with mass and scale and a lot of units, we're hearing that we're heading in that direction with, with what will be forthcoming in a revised site plan. One less story, many less units, more architecture. I don't want to speak for the developers, I thought they, they did a, a good job of articulating that. I know there's concern because we don't, we're not seeing any renderings, but that's a process yet to follow. It is a process that will occur. Lastly, I, I just want to note something that I think is, is obvious to all of us, we have a complicated code here in Flagstaff. We have very complicated zoning codes, layers and layers and layers of policies, and we talked about high occupancy housing, many other things, you know, resource protection, what have you. These layers of policies that have accumulated over years have made for a very complicated zoning code, and there's no easy way to navigate through it, and, and this is an illustration of that, and I, I don't think it's, should be surprising that developers are seeking to utilize what was in place when they started this process, and have a few more knowns and definitives, and certainly less time involved. Again, I think there's an element of fairness in that. We are embarking upon the, the last cap policy, or pardon me, code analysis to, to address the, these issues, and to try to make some simple, or changes that will, will hopefully streamline and simplify things, and make things a little bit easier, because the layers and layers, and the complications and the nuances of, of these zoning codes all amount to increased cost. And in a community where last year, we, we were 29% over the cost of housing statewide, that's not a good thing. These costs are borne by the developers, and they are ultimately passed on to homebuyers and renters. The more we can streamline and make simplicity of these things and make it easier, the more we can address our housing emergency, and give developers a little bit more foundation to, to stand on and know what will be required of them, and timing-wise, how long it will take. I think I'll stop with that. There's been a, a lot of very good discussion tonight, I know we have a lot of public comment to, to entertain. I will say, we're all looking forward to seeing the ribbon-cutting on the Roars project. My math is 228 units, I think slightly more than what was represented, could be wrong on that, and that's this year, and that'll be huge. And those, those buildings look wonderful. We are seeing some progress, and it's, it's a, a product of a lot of public-private partnership. I'll remind council, you came to the table with incentive for that very project. You, you are a financial partner in that, so good for you and, and good for the community. We look forward to seeing these units become available. So I just wanted to summarize a few things, maybe give some emphasis to the fact that this is a staff-supported process, and when that makes sense to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And just the Roars project, the units are all affordable, that's important. And I, I don't recall hearing you say that, but it's 100% affordable.
Thank you. I, I referenced 228 units, I was just talking about the totality of the units in the project. Thank you.
Mayor, sorry, I, I think I asked earlier to put something in the chat, I forgot one piece that I needed to cover in mine, it wasn't in the presentation, this is something we recognized, oh, I think it was early this morning. In looking at Amendment 1, which I have up on the screen now, I'm going to scroll down to the piece I was talking about, which is the true-up payment. We touched on this, that Vintage is responsible to make this payment, and did I pass it? Yes, I did. And the timeframe that they have, that they have five years to make that payment. So here's where it says that, no later than five years following the underpass completion, they need to make that true-up payment. And as I said, with, hoping it gets done this year, that puts that about 2030. The issue we recognized this morning is that in the DA, so now I've switched over to the recorded DA, that under duration, for the timeframe of this DA, it says this agreement will automatically terminate on the 10th anniversary of the effective date. The effective date was December 2018. So according to this section, we would have a terminated DA in 2028, but we still have an, the amendment to the DA saying Vintage would have another year, two years, to make that payment. So one thing, if council decides to go down the path of this amendment, I actually added, and I pulled up the wrong document, some language, an additional piece to the amendment, sorry, I didn't, not trying to complicate things, but we just wanted to add this Section 1.2 amendment, which, sorry, that's the wrong one, it's actually 15th. Lindsay asked me to change that prior to the meeting. But essentially, extend it out another five years, so we don't have a situation where we have a DA that's terminated, and yet potentially a payment still coming due. We just didn't want that confusion. So this, we would say, if you do decide to amend the DA tonight with the amendments we've already discussed, to have the motion say, in addition to the amendment discussed by staff regarding the duration of the agreement, something to that. by staff regarding the duration of the agreement, something to that effect, if you decide to go down this path. But I do think we need this just to make sure we're all on the same page, that we don't have an expired DA in 2028.
That's it.
So I am going to take public comment and then close the public hearing, and then council, you can ask additional questions, and we'll deliberate and take action. Cecily?
Good evening, now that it's evening. So mayor, vice mayor, and council members, first let me say thank you for your job. It's one of the most difficult, I'd have to say. And you've done a brilliant job in Flagstaff. As I was sitting here listening to everybody's conversations, I was thinking, you know, Toasted Owl is one of the first mixed-use projects in Flagstaff. We built two apartments above my restaurant so that they could be rented out by either staff or students or other thing. We've had all sorts of people. We've had traveling nurses, we've had students, we've had my staff. And it's worked out to be an unbelievably great project. We enjoy it, they enjoy it, they have parking, they're downtown, they're close to university, they're down to everything. I think that's important, that we have mixed use. It's in a lot of cities around America, for as long as I've known, we're, it's nice that we're getting into it. We all want affordable, safe housing for our young population, who are a large part of our workforce. And being a small business owner in Flagstaff that employs 59 people, all I ever hear every day is, I can't find housing, I have to live with people I don't like, there's nothing affordable. I get hit up every day, can I rent a room from you, Cecily, from your house? And can I live with you? And I was like, no, I have enough of you all day. But part of that, you know, sooner than later, we need more housing, and it needs to be affordable. And we need to have more Habitat for Humanity projects, and we need to have, you know, tiny homes available for other people. We want our city to grow, not just by people, but with everything, with housing, with businesses, with all of us, because it is an expensive town to live in now, and it's a place to do business. So we need people. We need more workforce people who are happy to be here, not people who are like, I lasted 90 days and I have to leave, which is what I hear a lot. We're losing our youth, and I really would like to see a generational Flagstaff that I always want to hire people, move them out, move them out, never can, because by the time they're ready to go, they're leaving Flagstaff, because it's just overpriced, under, you know, underdeveloped for what they need. So I don't want to lose another opportunity to create a great employee for me, for other people, for anything like that. I just lose way too much for lack of housing. I respect and understand the need for growth. I also respect and understand why people don't want growth, because once you let the cat out of the bag, it just doesn't seem to go back in, and it gets bigger and bigger. But we are a city, we're a destination. We're not just a city. Flagstaff's a destination that people want to be at, people want to have a good time at, and live. And we have to make that happen. So consider this housing project. Consider not just this one, but other ones that come in and allow us to have available housing for our work staff, for the people who want to live here forever like me, and not be priced out. I don't want to have to move my business because Flagstaff has no employees left that can be here. And I don't want to be another Sedona. So I want us to be better, bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. Roman Gobel?
Hello, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, City Council Members. My name is Roman Gobel. I'm a student here at NAU in Flagstaff. And recently, I've been attempting to resolve my housing situation for, you know, my next year here at NAU. And as you may know, the NAU housing process is pretty complex. So myself and a couple other students, you know, we tried as hard as we possibly could trying to find affordable housing that was near our classes, something that would be attainable for us. And even though we tried to be on it as soon as we could, ended up not working out in our favor. So I'm now forced to settle for an off-campus property. And this would require a hefty commute to school and most likely, a parking pass as well. And the only other option I'd have on campus is quite out of the budget. And while this wouldn't require a parking pass, the apartment itself is just too expensive, too steep. Speaking to many other students that I also have class with, or just other students on campus, I find that this is not an issue independent to myself, but it seems to be an issue that is common amongst a lot of students in Flagstaff. Having a property like the one that Vintage Partners plans to build, Milltown, it would not just benefit myself, but the future generations of students that are coming to Flagstaff, as well as any future families that plan on living here, having kids, and their kids need a place to stay. It applies to essentially everyone. So that being said, I strongly support Vintage Partners in moving forward with the Milltown development here in Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Berger?
My name's Cameron Bunger. I am, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the 20 to 30 others joining me here this afternoon in favor of the future of Flagstaff. I'm currently a senior here at NAU and Flagstaff resident. I would like to continue residing in Flagstaff, but with how expensive housing currently is, and if projects like this get shut down in the future and the cost of living, let alone the cost of housing goes up, I don't know that I'll be able to afford to continue residing here. The Milltown project will provide more affordable housing for people like myself and the younger generation, everybody sitting over there, everybody that, at NAU, and just the younger generations as a whole. A lot of Arizona residents who decide to seek a college education at NAU do so because of how affordable in-state tuition is, and the scholarships, and the grants at NAU, and that NAU offers. The cost of liv, the cost of living in Flagstaff, as I mentioned, is already very high, and if the cost of living goes up even further, that outweighs all the affordable tuition that the university offers. I believe this project will greatly benefit the Flagstaff community and the future of Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle James?
Hello, mayor, vice mayor, and council. My name is Michelle James. I'm the executive director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future, also known as F-Cubed. I'm speaking for the community represented by our 400 members who want to see the HOH plan implemented for this project, which is designed for student living. F-Cube supports high-density housing in this location. F-Cubed is not anti-student housing, and we support density and affordability. You all know this. I feel like the applicant has inaccurately portrayed F-Cube's concerns. We have written a lot, it's all in writing, it can be checked. We agree that the walkability potential of this development is great, and I want to make an observation that I think the applicant and F-Cube agree on many, many things. We, F-Cube, understand the question before council today is very narrow, to approve, remand, or deny the Second Amendment of the Milltown Development Agreement. Citizens work closely with the city to craft the high occupancy housing plan, and the zoning amendment would apply to qualifying housing designed as high occupancy, including for housing designed for student living. The staff's PowerPoint indicates that the HOH places important limitations on the maximum number of the four- and five-bedroom units, and requires a small minimum percentage of studio and one-bedroom units. If the council approves the Second Amendment to the DA, the applicant will be able to build the project that does not meet these requirements, which were put in place to ensure a greater diversity of housing types after the community saw so many large apartment complexes designed exclusively, almost exclusively, for student living. If the city believes that there are issues with the HOH code, we recommend a public discussion about any problems and a consideration to amend it. F-Cube believes this is a more appropriate strategy than granting one developer the right to use the 2017 code, which predates the HOH code. Council approval of the Second Amendment and the DA, for the DA, will send a message that the city's codes are not important. F-Cube does not see a compelling reason to approve the Second Amendment of the Milltown DA. We are really arguing about a few more one-bedroom studio apartments and a few fewer four- and five-bedroom apartments. We believe approval will send a message that our city codes are not important. I probably repeated that, excuse me. The council's denial of the Second Amendment will still allow the applicant to develop the site, but they will need to use the HOH code. I think we can be creative, and the applicant can work with city staff to make that happen. We urge the city council to deny the Second Amendment to the Milltown DA. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Christie?
Hi, thank you for having me. That's my, or thank you for serving. It's my first time speaking. I hope you'll extend me some grace on that issue. I am here as opposed to the amendment, or whatever we're doing here, mostly because I, I don't see how our new codes will not be better situation than what the old code was. I'm sorry Walter's feeling depressed, and I admire his donations with Habitat for Humanity, which I also support, as well as the Humane Society. But that does not mean that what his view is, is in the best interest of those in Flagstaff. I ask this council to hold to high standards. I, I don't go into a court a lot without an attorney representing me, and I can't go before these people because I don't have the experience. And that's why we voted you in, because you have the tools and the ability to represent us in ways that we can't represent ourselves. I'm not sure how many empty student housing apartments there are throughout the year. If you is part of the development of the apartments on Macmillan Mesa, it's a Russian roulette, depending on when you apply for an apartment. If it's on a Monday or Friday, the rates are usually lower. If you get it when students are in town, then the rates are much higher. I don't call that affordable living. That's my other question. What is affordable living? On my street, I live in Walnut Meadows, my neighbor rented a house, it was sold to an outside investor. They told him one week before his rent was due that his rent was going up $900 a month. I have two houses on my street. One has two families living in it with four kids. The other end has a woman my age with her two children and their children living in her house because they can't afford housing. I commend these young students for coming and participating in this process, but I'm asking you, what are you doing for us, the people that live here? Somebody talked about the older generation. Well, guess what? My family's been here since 1886, and my kids would like to continue to live in, too. What are we doing to provide jobs for these people? I think three businesses downtown went out of business this year. I don't know how building more apartments down there and providing all these restaurants and all this other stuff for them helps support the community of Flagstaff. It doesn't. And unless you're going to somehow restrict NAU students from bringing cars to town, you better provide the parking lots for them. I think I said it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Irwin?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council. My name is Stephen Irwin, Flagstaff resident. I'm here to speak in favor of this DA amendment. For me, it comes down to two things. The partnership, right? We talk about what does Vintage benefit from this, like it's a bad thing, right? ADOT has benefited tremendously by getting a new facility, city's getting a new road. Now it's Vintage's turn, right? They've delivered, they're a good partner. They've come to you, asked for more time. They found a partner that wants to deliver a smaller project. Councilmember Matthews, shorter project, less dense. I think we owe it as a city to be a good partner to Vintage. You know, I, I respect everyone that spoke in this room, but I, I don't think this is really a difficult request. All of the difficult items have already been hashed out. This is just asking for an extension, figure out how to come up with a better development. You know, you guys, the whole community will have another crack at this when that time comes later this year. Second thing for me is, you know, smart development. I live in Cheshire. I have two houses behind me, small sample size, similar to Councilmember Garcia, but for two years, parties, cars parked all over the front yards, they finally moved out, now we have younger families. You know, we talk about what are you doing for the city? Well, building more housing for students, that gets students out of the neighborhoods and where they should be, and in a smart, thought-out location like Milltown, where you have a pedestrian underpass, multimodal transportation, bus stops, shared bike, pedestrian paths, you know, it makes sense. This just spits the students right out into campus from housing. So really, those are just, to me, it comes down to, it's a pretty simple request. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Barbara Bates?
Mayor, vice mayor, city council members, my name's Barbara Bates. I've lived in Flagstaff for the past 32 years, and I worry about what our lovely historic town is becoming. Since the first college apartment building on Milton and Phoenix, our community has seen monstrosity after monstrosity built to house NAU students. We've already lost our cozy history town to an overrun downtown, buildings constructed without consideration of the historic feel and allowed non-conformance to city building and historic requirements. We need to protect the jewel that we are lucky enough to live in. Constant growth too close to downtown with these four- and five-story buildings now block the view of the beautiful San Francisco Peaks in many places. I've lived in a community where well-planned growth has been developed. I'm not against growth, but I am for well-planned growth. That is not what I've seen in Flagstaff in the last 20 years. Development of apartment buildings and houses in the outskirts of the city have grown without the additional infrastructure to support them, to prevent greater congestion on our thoroughfares and our old historic communities throughout the downtown area. These are overscaled apartment buildings. They never should have been built to begin with. Remember that you were elected to enforce and uphold the community plans, goals, and visions for Flagstaff's future development. You now have the opportunity to enforce the HOH for the benefit of our community. I'm not an expert in water, but I certainly think that is a huge issue with these monstrosity buildings. I think this is a difficult decision for you. I don't envy you. I've learned a lot. I can't disagree with the city manager in the timing, but in the future, I would hope that would you consider these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Silver?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. When we were talking a little bit about who would be renting these units, I wasn't aware that Vintage had the leasing contract for this proposed project. Regardless, let's not forget, we are talking about which version of the zoning code to use for review of this proposal. That's why we're here tonight. That's what we're talking about. All this ancillary discussion is, in my view, ancillary. It's important, but it is ancillary to the question at hand. An original site plan was approved in June of 2018. As stated in the staff report, the applicant would be allowed to make changes to the site plan under a minor modification to the site plan approval, which allows for changes up to approximately 10% from what was initially approved. Currently, there has been no submittal that meets the requirements for this minor modifications. Now fast forward to today, the applicant is suggesting that any new site plan proposals should be The applicant is suggesting that any new site plan proposals should be reviewed under a zoning code that was in place in May of 2017. You don't get to pick and choose the zoning code version that you like. It doesn't work that way. A new site plan proposal should be reviewed under the zoning code in place at the time of submittal. I am sure that if I submitted a site plan proposal but asked that my plan be reviewed against a past zoning code that I liked better, I would be laughed out of the office. How is what this applicant is calling for fair or equitable? It's not. You know it, I know it, and any reasonable person knows it. While the applicant was rightsizing their project for their for-profit business model, the city of Flagstaff, with public input, was rightsizing our zoning code to include HOH code regulations. This new site plan needs to be reviewed under the current zoning code. Please reject this resolution. Now I see in Section 3 of this redlined Second Amendment to the DA that if this resolution does not pass, exceptions would be made for engineering standards, building code, fire code, and more. What's with this? I can't ask about this, but you can and should on behalf of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Norton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mary Norton disclosing I am on P&amp;Z, but I'm commenting as a citizen. Things change. Conditions, costs, the market, partnerships, demand and change, demands and trends, all change, which we see daily and certainly since the writing of this DA. Because of changes, they can't build the 1,200-bedroom, five-story development. They don't have a partner, anyone that stepped forward in seven years to take that risk. Remember that. Likewise, we as a city went through changes and the high occupancy housing specific plan was adopted. Now they want a rightsize to 665 bedrooms. Still large, but it's an appropriate location for it. What's not appropriate is deviating from codes that were adopted over four years ago and written seven years ago. To ask that only one party to the DA be allowed to change to reflect to current conditions is not reasonable to the other party because we, the city, have current conditions to keep up with as well. As I detailed in a previous email, this is a risky precedent and I stand by that concern that this will be exploited by others. When Councilmember Aslan asked the concern last month, the applicant acknowledged the concern and said, and I quote, "The development community leverages where there's a loophole, they jump on it and lawyer up. Please do not create this loophole." Understandably Vintage Partners is asking for guidance and firm parameters to move forward to complete the project, but please don't table the details to further down the road during rezoning and a more detailed development plan because that's when we often hear, "Well, they've spent so much money and time, we should approve this." It's a rezoning case. We can only evaluate the rezoning. It's a site plan. We're not looking at the product to be built. Where can we talk about the ratio of bedrooms to baths and types of floor plans and percentage of unit types? It's in the HOH code, which you're being asked to ignore and waive. Right here and now is where you ensure and agree that this future development adheres to process and current code, which depending on the final proposal would, might, include high occupancy housing. We actually don't know what the final proposal is and it could still change under an extended and amended DA. Though this last piece of the P3 collaboration is seemingly the least popular element, but I believe it will be far less contentious if it goes through the process under current code. Whether it ends up as an HOH development or a standard high-density development, student-focused or not, the location is appropriate. Hopefully creativity will prevail to end up with something far better than the original or what's currently proposed. Allow that to happen under current code that reflects the changes of the last decade. There are more options than the two that they have offered. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Flakis.
Mayor, she had to leave.
Deborah Block.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The Miltown project is approved in 2018 was a, quote, "340-unit, 112/21-bed student rooming and boarding facility with a projected rental fee of $700 per bed." Affordable? And this was seven years ago. This housing design of multiple bedrooms with en suite bathrooms intended for students and rented per bed has mushroomed in Flagstaff and elsewhere. This type of housing is typically a big business solution run by entities such as American Campus Communities and Hub on Campus. It does not provide a pathway to affordable housing for students who wish to remain in Flagstaff. The Miltown project stalled and now Vintage Partners wants to revisit developing the property and is asking to disregard the HOH building codes established at least partly in response to the overabundance of properties developed for students and second home owners. Across the country, the housing crisis has been exacerbated by housing increasingly seen as commodity and private equity investment. So-called student housing development in Flagstaff should respond to community need, not developer greed. I know nothing of Vintage Partners' personnel, but I do object to large-city developers supposing their projects are appropriate for smaller cities. Also, what I heard today from the developers sounded like threats. How dare you impugn my character? I will not be stopped. We will make a Prop 207 claim if you reject our demands. And don't forget that I'm a habitat builder, therefore I am trustworthy. That Prop 207 is wielded as a bludgeon is not what I consider civil discussion. I oppose the Second Amendment. Please retain the sensible mandates of the HOH code requirements and do not allow the developer to bypass them. The HOH policies reflect what is best for our community and should be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Wiseman.
I also, oh, Mayor, Council, Marilyn Wiseman, thirty, over 30-year resident of Flagstaff. You know, I didn't come here tonight expecting to relitigate student housing. I just want to apply the code that we already have litigated about student housing and we created to make it so that we can have dense housing that everybody can live in. I myself personally rent to students in my house and that's in a neighborhood and I don't mind living with students and I don't mind students living in my neighborhood. But I would like our dense housing that we're going to be developing in the years to come to be able to include everyone. When you have a project that is 80%, like the project that was built, four and five-bedroom units, 80% of that building is going to students. I don't know what their coming project is going to be because it has left to be developed, but they say they're rightsizing it. We've already rightsized this. We have the HOH plan. That was the community, the council before you's decision about how to have student housing and housing in apartments for everyone and how to have it be a neighborhood. You know, Walter said that he wants a vibrant community. I want a vibrant community too. I don't think these large, massive student housing projects without a mix of kinds of different kinds of people in them and, you know, just ghettoized sort of altogether is the way to have a vibrant community. I think we can be creative about this, as I think Mary said. We could make it so that we can have mixed use that actually is a place that everybody would like to live. And so, you know, I oppose this. I think you have a difficult decision, not because which code to follow, but because this was a public-private partnership. And it makes me wonder about the goodness of public-private partnerships. If this is what it comes to, that we have to give in to the intimidation and the threats that we're getting from a developer that we did this with, it's just very disappointing to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Wolverton.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, City Manager, and Team Flagstaff. Thank you so much for giving me a moment just to speak, not on behalf of Habitat per se, but more so just on the personal reflection that I felt working with Vintage Partners at Timber Sky. What I've been hearing a lot on the floor is that unfortunately we have a conflicted view of what I perceive as being trust. And so obviously when there is an amendment that's being asked for, there's going to be a question of why. And that is a very respectful question. And I think that that is your role to be asking that question and that's why we're here in this room. But what I want to really iterate is what I have seen with Vintage, working with them for the last two years at Timber Sky with Habitat. First and foremost, if you guys have never been a developer on creating 40 homes, it's a lot of work, an incredible amount of work. But it all started with one conversation and that was with Walter the day that his donation of three acres of land went to Habitat. And he called me up and he said, "Congratulations, the land is yours and I am not leaving you because if I do, you will fail." He understood that we weren't prepared to be able or have the capacity to make this development happen on our own. And through his help and the professionalism that came from Lindsay, pro bono legal advice for the last three years for Habitat, Walter on the phone every week devoted with his engineering team, pro bono for Habitat. What I've witnessed with Walter is an unbelievable willingness to look outside the box, but most importantly, to focus on the broad need of housing in Flagstaff. That it could be a student. It could be a transitional family moving from homelessness into hopefully a more standard living situation. It could be for families wanting a second home in Flagstaff to enjoy the simple fact that they might be snowbirds. There's nothing wrong with meeting these needs. But what is incredible is that he has a vision to meet those needs all in one neighborhood. And if you look at Flagstaff historically, we always ghettoed our neighborhoods. If you look at how we're revitalizing Sunnyside, that is for a reason. But with Timber Sky, we are moving people with 60% AMI, 80% AMI into market rate. This is really good building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mateo Simar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a freshman out of state student at NAU and I am from a vulnerable community in Peoria, Illinois. And I was given the privilege to come to Flagstaff on scholarship to pursue my education and better my quality of life. I love this town and I'd love to stay here after I complete my education. One of the things I've noticed since I've lived here is the high demand for housing in my budget and a very competitive supply. In two months, I'm going to go back to Illinois because I don't have the means to stay here in the summer and I'm going to be excited to come back in the fall. And obviously the cost of living isn't going to go down anytime soon. And when it comes to Flagstaff's mission statement to improve the quality of life for everybody, that needs to account for more than just established residents and needs to account for students in the same situation like myself that aren't permanent residents yet and young people in general that would love the opportunity to settle here in the future. With that being said, I believe raising the housing supply in an accessible place between town and the college campus would be very beneficial to the quality of life for people like me and residents in similar positions. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And we have some online commenters.
Dr. Coral Evans, you can address Mayor and Council.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Thank you for allowing public participation on this item. My name is Coral Evans and my family has had a presence in Flagstaff for six generations. I'm calling in as a private citizen. I was mayor at the time this current site plan was approved and I voted for it. I'm in support of this technical amendment for the Miltown DA and I encourage this council to move it forward. The voters of Flagstaff moved forward a transportation tax decades ago. Without Vintage Partners, the work that we are seeing now would not be happening. They moved Harkins and then ADOT. The Milton Underground Walking Path that was on the city's transportation plan for 50 years unfunded is now happening. I believe that Vintage paid for that. This partner started overall with the realignment of the University Avenue, which has taken decades. As Attorney Fensel mentioned, amending a DA is not unheard of. In this case, we're amending a DA to bring back for public comment an updated project. This is something for the public to weigh in on. Councilmember Garcia, I agree with you as a community, we are missing middle housing and that is something we need to reflect on. Each and every single time we talk about affordable housing, which equates to middle housing, many, some who own a home and some who own two, are the first to say we need affordable housing, but not there, they're being in their backyard. A good example of this includes the old Public Works Yard, which would have been a great place for housing in field, and the Sunflower Patch on Fort Valley Road. The property the city currently owns and is site-ready. I'll be back to talk about that property with you all in the very near future. The current time, this current site plan, Councilmember Barrett's called monolithic, meaning it was too big, and she voted against it. It seems like this opportunity will give those in Flagstaff who are against monolithic type of developments a smaller, more desirable development to discuss. I am support of Vintage Partners' current request for this technical amendment and again, I encourage council to move it forward. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. No more online comments? Correct. Okay. And I don't have any more in-person comments either. So I am going to close the public hearing and council will deliberate. And I have a cue here of Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to all the public present here this evening, commenting and to listening to this fruitful discussion. After last month's preliminary discussion and before, as we continued the discussion to tonight, I did go, like Councilmember Garcia, I did go to the five-story developments around town. I went to the Ugo, to the Jack, to the Standard, to the Park Place, and to Fremont Station. I didn't get to the Grove. But what I found out is in some total, these six five-story multifamily apartment buildings total, one, and this is an estimate, 1,200 dwelling units or 3,500 bedrooms. And these five-story developments have all come up since the Miltown was on the drawing board. So when people have said this evening that times have changed over these seven years, that's certainly true. All of these big developments, starting with the Hub, which is now the Jack, they led to the HOH Housing Code. And the HOH Housing Code was a multi-year process that involved a lot of citizen input. And the key feature that is being resisted, if you will, by Vintage Partners is the requirement that 20, in our HOH Housing Code, 20% or more of the dwelling units shall be studio or one-bedroom apartments. So it's giving a minimum floor of living spaces that are suitable for a small family. The other HOH consideration is that there shall be less than 30% of the dwelling units of four or five or more bedrooms per dwelling unit. So I am going to vote against the approval of the development agreement. And my reason is not because I don't favor Vintage Partners' reputation. It's not because I am worried about the timeline. It is because we should govern by rule and not by exception. So it's my belief, and this is the reason I'm going to vote no, that by granting an exemption from the current housing, high-density housing exemption from the current housing, high-density housing code for a project that is now being proposed as a redesign project, that that would open the door to other developers saying, "Well, you did it for Vintage, you need to do it for us." And I'll close by saying that we've heard an estimate of the revised proposal coming from Vintage, that they would put in around 262 dwelling units, and that they would right-size at around 668 bedrooms. Well, the way that would pencil out under the current HOH code would be 52 dwelling units, that would be studio or one-bedroom, 52 or more, and 155 or less of the large four- and five-bedroom, four- and five-bathroom dwelling units. It's my contention that this is not an onerous requirement, it's kind of in line with what Vintage has said they will propose to come forward with, and I encourage them to do that after we vote on this this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to take just a second to thank staff. This has been quite a marathon. It's not over yet, by any, no matter what, right? A lot of work has gone into this. You guys have really put your heart and soul into this, you understand it better than anyone, and yet, you're not, you're kind of not in control of the final decision, and I know that's a very, a very interesting position to be in. You do this work because you're passionate, and you believe in helping the community, and I just want to acknowledge that. I also want to thank the public here. Thank you so much for coming out. I like to acknowledge this. I think it's great when our room is full. You wouldn't notice this when you're not here, but it changed the dynamic in council chambers. We have more of an audience to entertain, I guess, I don't know. Also, just, it feels better to be up here. You know, I would liken it to, you know, basketball, NBA during the bubble. Those games just felt weird. It's nice to have people here, it's nice to know that you all care, it's nice to know that there's a diverse perspective of opinions, and it's nice to know that you guys are knowledgeable and understand all these things. I think in the back of our minds that keeps us on our toes all throughout the year, all throughout our terms. So I've been at this for quite a while now. I've been on council for six and a half years, and dealing with public policy since 2004. And I mention this for two relevant reasons. First, I think it's worth noting that no one up here, including myself, was around for the original development agreement and private-public partnership conversations. Not many people completing the triangle here of tables was either. And secondly, I've got enough experience in this realm to be able to say that the argument is lost with the public. If it takes several pages of details in two council meetings, a continuance in an executive session to argue a position that is ostensibly characterized as actually quite simple and straightforward. This is not over either way, right? Some in the public may not understand that, but I want to be clear that I do. This development will be back in front of council and the community, no matter what we decide tonight. A lot of density is allowed now and will certainly be proposed later. But that's not reason enough for me to take a position today one way or the other. I'll share with you what is, though, and I think it's fair, I think it's relevant, and in point of fact, I think it's actually quite simple and straightforward. And I'll tell you, I've put a lot of thought into this, exploring the multifaceted nature of it. I recognize how complicated it is. So I rely on sort of my own form of the Occam's razor in these circumstances. The bottom line is, I'm not okay with amending a site plan that'll be nine years old when it sunsets. Come what come may, time and the hour runs through the roughest day. This is a line from Macbeth, it's early in the play when Macbeth has just heard about the prophecies made by folks about him. It basically translates to, whatever happens, happens. A monstrosity of four- or five-bed units may result from the extracted process initiated by an amendment denial. But I'm not sitting up here to rubber stamp inevitabilities. I'm sitting up here on the community's behalf to ensure they feel like they're being heard and respected. I've made this case before. Our community is not poorly informed, their concerns are not phantom concerns, nor irrelevant to the question at hand. This is a values conversation, and the people speaking up are speaking to their values. There's, there'd be a lot less opposition to a neighborhood development in this spot. Maybe the protracted process will provide some reflection that a lower-hanging fruit development is a better bargain at the end of the day. Vintage wasn't able to find a builder for their project over the past several years. They're here again because they finally found one, if they can substantially deviate from what was previously greenlit. The prophecy that we'll end up with something worse than what's being dangled before us now feels pretty muted to me, I have to say, because no one has wanted to build so far, and our housing needs are only going to continue to evolve towards more diverse types and away from students. If time unfolds slowly in this process, it's my hope that as time goes on, that trend will play a louder role in informing what eventually goes in at the entrance to our community across from that target. Come what come may, we'll see, right? Vintage has rights, right now, to build on that land, they've invested considerably in it, and the city has undoubtedly been a beneficiary of all of that. I love that repurposed Harkins to ADOT building. Vintage is doing some very cool things in Flagstaff, as noted, then and now, and my hope is that this plot is also one of them. I'm at peace with letting a process play out that adheres to my organizing principle of not being okay at a fundamental level with amending a site plan that's going to be nine years old. The original entitlement, the, all the original entitlements were brokered three administrations ago, two NAU presidents ago, two governors ago, when John McCain and Jeff Flake were our senators. That was three mayors ago, it was three city managers ago. No one on this council was here. It was before a global pandemic, and now it's, and right now, it's a scary new era federally, one without modern precedent. We should be considering our developments, given the modern landscape, when we're provided the opportunity to do so. No one operating in 2017 could have fathomed what 2025 or 2027 or later would look like. So let's take a look at it, but let's do so through the lens of our current context. I don't see any problem with a fresh start. There is an argument that time will have been wasted if there's a reset. I'm not concerned about that. We all professionally invest in prospective activities. Just because I spend a year writing a novel does not mean I'm entitled to selling it. Believe me, I know. My wife writes grant proposals at significant investment of resources that often don't bear fruit. This isn't a waste of time or resources, it's a normal, healthy part of the process. By the way, I have an incredible amount of respect for Walter, for Vintage. I have no reason to mistrust him or the partners that he personally vets. It puts me in a really uncomfortable place. The reality is, though, that it's not my responsibility to manage the risk of any developer made in 2018. My responsibility is to the needs of the community today. So I will not be voting to approve an amendment for those reasons. If I'm in the minority, I don't begrudge those who choose differently. I think it serves a purpose to register as dissenting vote. There's utility in doing it, and I look forward to remaining at the table either way, whatever council decides as a whole. Thank you very much for indulging me, Mayor.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to acknowledge just everyone who sent emails and phone calls, who came here today in person, who spoke their mind. Had I known that there was a group of citizens that we're putting together, which we now call the HOH, I would have been right there with them because, as Coral Evans mentioned, you know, we were all kind of outraged with the monolithic buildings that were going up. For me, it wasn't so much that, who was occupying them, but just that it didn't seem to fit our community. But five of us, five of us here on City Council have approved already a handful of Prop 207 claims, and I'm guessing they will come at some point in the near future with a project that's not going to have any HOH in it because they've already been exempted from that. That's the law. I don't take, I didn't take the comments from the developers to be threats or intimidations, it's business, they're speaking facts. What will we, what will happen if we do not approve this amendment tonight? What we've already approved with a handful of other property owners is they will still be able to develop their project how they want because they are going to file a Prop 207 claim, and they're going to move forward. So what's going to be gained if we vote this down tonight? It's going to cost a very valuable community partner who has delivered more affordable housing than any other developer that I know of in this city, six more months on top of the years that it's taken. The cost will most likely go up, and guess who that gets passed on to? The renters. So whether they are student housing, and one of the speakers spoke on this, getting students to move closer to campus frees up other apartments and other housing in our community, this is not going to stop. We are not saying we're giving them an exemption from the HOH. They already have it by law because they started this project before the HOH was determined. There's a frightening list of people that have the same exemption. And unless you have this exemption, unless you meet those two criterias, you can't come back and say, "Well, I want what you gave Walter." No, unless they fit the criteria, that's the only reason why they're going to get this approved, this waiver. So what we would do tonight, if we turn this down, is alienate a good community partner who's delivered a lot of affordable housing, have thought outside the box, donated land for Habitat a couple of years ago to think that Habitat would have property to build 40, 80 homes. I would never have guessed. So we have two options tonight. We can approve the amendment because of the Prop 20, if they didn't have the ability to file a 207 claim at the end of this year, it's a different conversation. But they do, and they have every legal right to, and so has handfuls of other property owners that you haven't heard of yet because haven't came forward with their project. So we can either approve this amendment so they can move forward finally in this project, nobody wants to see an empty lot there, it's time to see it built, or we can make them wait, maybe lose their partner, I don't know. It took them a while to find the partner that they have now. And if they lose their partner, how long will it sit? It's not going to change the bottom line, that they will build something without the HOH code. I'm for the HOH code for the ones that it applies to. I don't want to see five-story buildings. I want to see something that's fitting to our community, but it's undeniable, when we change a law, we have to go back and see, is it going to take away the value of why they invested in the property? And this certainly would. So we have to make some concessions to the property owners that were there before, but then, moving forward, new property purchasers have to comply with HOH. So I will be in support of this amendment, and I hope my colleagues will remember that this whole conversation tonight was about, regardless, they will file a 207 claim and continue on with this, so are we going to alienate a community partner and extend maybe the cost of all of this? And so I'm going to vote yes, and I hope that the rest will remember how many others we've already approved to be exempt from this. That's it.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking the staff for their hard work in supporting mine and other council members' research and considerations on this item. I know that their expertise and their dedication to that, serving that role really helps to ensure that we're making well-informed decisions that are serving our community's best interests. I also want to thank every community member who has taken the time to engage in this discussion, whether you are in support, in opposition, or simply those who have reached out asking some of the thoughtful questions that have been brought before us tonight. To me, your voices are invaluable in shaping how we approach development in Flagstaff, and I am always grateful to hear from you. And I want to recognize that the concerns that have been raised about this amendment, particularly around housing diversity, affordability, and how this project fits within our broader community goals, are concerns that we all hear, excuse me, and that we all take seriously. At the same time, I am looking at this amendment as the creative opportunity that some of us are talking about, to right-size this project in a way that better aligns with our current priorities. Without this amendment, I believe that the developer has the ability to move forward under the previously approved agreement that allows for the larger footprint and potentially a less desirable outcome for our community. It was a decision that was approved under a prior Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously, and it was a decision that, at the time, met with the opposition of community members who are voicing similar concerns as we've heard tonight. So I think, and it's my belief going into this, that by granting this amendment, we're actually allowing for a more intentional approach, and it's one that brings this project into better scale and opens the door for discussions about how it can more effectively meet Flagstaff's housing needs today than how it might have met them in the past. I believe this is an opportunity for us to work toward a solution that benefits both the community and the developer, and us as an entire community with that consideration, ensuring that we are being thoughtful stewards of growth while also honoring the commitments and fostering a climate of collaborative development. I don't believe any project is perfect, and I certainly don't think that this has been a perfect project and/or a perfect process, but I see the process that we're undertaking tonight in this consideration as a step towards a more balanced and community-aligned outcome. So I deeply appreciate the engagement and dialogue that has helped to bring us to this point, and I look forward to the rest of this conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
I don't necessarily have any prepared statements for this moment, this is one of the bigger decisions that we've come before council while I've been seated here. But I again want to thank all of the participation from the public. I counted, I think, 110 emails as of last night or this morning, and, you know, all of us read each and every one of those. I think there was a little bit of a misconception of what we could do here on the dais today, and I also felt some of, some of that misconception that I heard from those emails. And what I heard was, well, if you vote no, then this thing just goes away, and that's just not the facts. If we vote no, then that bigger project that was already previously approved, that's what they get to deal with. I thought last night, I was very naive to think last night, that I had the answer. I said, "Well, shoot, this is easy, I'm just going to go over there and propose," because we don't just have two, you know, two ways to go, we could, there's a third way where we can, you know, manipulate the process a little bit. The second option would have been for me to approve the Second Amendment for Milltown Development, adhering to the HOH code while utilizing the multi-parking calculation. Boom, done, solved, right? Well, what we learned from today from Vintage Partners, that if we mention anything about the HOH code, they're coming after us with the 207. So now, it's rested upon So now it's rested upon my shoulders, do I want to bankrupt the city, go into litigation over this? Or do we work with our partners from Vintage who want to right-size this project and encourage them to stick with the content of community input that they've heard tonight and try to solve some of those missing middle pieces? And, and also make that density in, in line with, with where this project sits? Because I think that this, where this project sits is a great place for density and all that goes along with it. So, so I really appreciate Councilwoman House look and view of what has been said tonight. I also appreciate Councilmember Aslan's view, which are quite a dichotomy apart from each other. So I'm going to leave it up to the vote tonight to, for the rest of my comments. I just have learned a lot through this process, and I think we all have. And if this goes the way of the yes vote, then we have an opportunity to come together as a, as, as a community to influence the direction of how this development goes. Because it seems to me that Vintage Partners wants to work with this community and will listen to us. And at this point, because of those 207 claims, that's all we can hope. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I do want to also thank staff, the public, and Vintage Partners for answering our questions. A month ago, I did call for a continuance, and it was not an easy thing for me to do. But I am so thankful. I believe that we all have been able to ask our questions. The community has been able to get involved and have some of their questions answered. We did our homework. And I now understand all sides to this issue. And that took a lot of time, and I'm glad that we had that. So, you know, I'm not saying that in the future, if this passes tonight, that my vote will be an absolute automatic yes. But what I do want to say is that I see the value in giving this project a chance. I think, you know, I'm hearing there Vintage is willing to bring forward, forward affordable housing to this community, get us less cars on the street, creating something that is neighborhood-focused, providing a smaller footprint, providing diversity for all housing types, and giving the opportunity for this project to be an asset for Flagstaff. And I have to believe that that is the intention of Vintage Partners. They have been a partner in this community. I have seen what Walter is capable of doing. And if they stick to what they are saying tonight, that they are committed to working towards what I just listed, then I will be a yes on this. And I'm counting on you, and I'm looking out at the audience, Lindsay and Walter, that you're hearing me. I need this to be something that is for this community. And I'm, I want to see this opportunity happen. So thank you again, everyone. I really appreciate all the comments tonight and the emails. This has been a, a good, good experience for all of us to rethink what we want for Flagstaff. And I think moving forward with these ideas in mind, we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to try to clear up a couple of things. The, the draft DA does not exempt the developer from the engineering standards and everything else. And if I, if I understood the comment correctly. And, and another comment was made, not tonight, but has been made to me that we've seen more luxury apartments than we've seen affordable. And I'll get into what is affordable. But last year and currently under construction, there has been a total of nine hundred and twenty-one units either constructed last year or under construction this year. Of those, three hundred and fifty-five have been affordable. And what affordable is, we do have a definition of it. It is that a individual or a family is spending no more than thirty percent of their gross income on housing. So, I mean, I'm, I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of the, the, the work that this council and staff and partners have put into creating some affordable housing. Proposition 207, it's been referred to as a threat. And, and sure, that could be, that could be a way to see it, but I see it more as a consequence. I mean, it is a law that's on the books. And it's very real. As Councilmember Matthews said, we have given waivers to, to several property owners who, who asserted, and we found just cause, that the high occupancy housing code diminished the value of their property. And so they were given a waiver. The, the, the alternative is to go to court with them, which is very, very expensive. And that we are, I mean, we're, I think probably more likely than not, and this is my unlegal, I am not an attorney, but I think more likely than not, we'd lose because there is, there is a law that says, and this was the Arizona Legislature, that if you diminish someone's property value, they can file a 207 claim. So I don't see it as a threat. I see it as a consequence. And that consequence means that we would be putting the city in harm's way monetarily if we did something that brought about a 207 claim. So I think it's good that we're talking about it. Okay, now attorney, an attorney wants to tell me what?
No problem. It's called Prop 207, Mayor, just for everyone's information, because it was an Arizona-wide voter-approved proposition.
Sorry.
So just wanted to make sure. It wasn't just the legislature, it was the voters.
Don't blame it on the legislature, it was voters.
I'm, I'm rarely coming to their defense, but anyway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I'm wondering if, for those who are inclined to vote yes, whether it matters to you whether this was granted for one year versus two years? And those who voted no, whether that would make a difference to you as well? And this is to Walter. I agree that we've had our share of student housing. So when the site plan comes back to planning and zoning and to, and I should say, I should say housing that is designed primarily for students. This is not an anti-student statement. But when the site plan comes back to planning and zoning and to the council, I'd like to see a healthy mix of types of rentals. And if you want to use the percentages that are in the HOH, that would be okay with me. I just think that this community has been very clear that we, we want to move on from that model and we want to create something different. So I hope that that has been heard. Also, to Walter, I will say that I love affordable housing at the, the definition that I gave earlier. So don't be afraid to bring that forward when you come forward with your site plan. I too would like to thank the public. This is, it's fantastic to get this kind of engagement. I do, I am concerned that, that we don't always operate under the same set of, the same set of information. And that, you know, there's a, there's a certain amount of, I mean, student housing just really elicits an emotional response from our community. And I understand that, which is why I have asked to see, to not see that anymore from any project. And, but I think that, I mean, I feel confident that the site plan that we will see will be better than what has been proposed and what they could submit building permits for until December. And, yeah, so that's where I'm going. So I'm wondering, council, those that are, are, you know, a no or those are a yes, does it make a difference to you whether it's extended one year or two years?
No difference to me.
None, none? Okay. All right, so we will leave it as is. And I want to, Kevin, yes?
Sorry, I was just coming up here. I, I was just going to come up here and prepare something in case you're done. I didn't have anything to do.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Oh, preparing something for the next item?
Nope, nope, something for you. Yeah. So if, if council wants to make a motion to approve, I talked earlier about that section 1.2 in the DA duration. That's not in the version that's attached to the agenda item. So if you do want to approve, I would suggest adding that, that amendment to the duration section that extends it out for another five years, as I discussed earlier. And if you want to do that, I just wanted to throw some language up there because sometimes that can be confusing when you read the motion. So use it if you want.
All right, council, I am looking for a motion. And remember to include with this amendment that Kevin has put up on the screen.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we read Resolution Number 2025-05 by title only, authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the Milltown Development Agreement with the addition of the amendment to the duration section of the development agreement discussed by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. The motion carries five to two. City clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the Milltown Development Agreement between Vintage Partners LLC and the City of Flagstaff related to the development of approximately thirteen acres of real property generally located at 1801 South Milton Road and establishing an effective date as amended.
Thank you. And how about a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, the motion carries five to two. All right, thank you, everyone. We're moving on to our regular agenda. And I will tell you that after 11A, we are going to take a 10-minute break. All right, so 11A, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-06.
Good evening, council. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Brian Hunsinger, Water Production Manager. Here to talk about our Interbasin Pipeline that David presented on earlier concerning water line, I'm sorry, Wildlife Drinkers, intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Game and Fish. To recap on our infrastructure, we have both spring catchments in the Interbasin, as you can see on the left. One that we worked on last summer with Hunter Contracting. We also have Interbasin wells, as you can see on the right. The spring catchments were established in the late 1800s. Interbasin wells were drilled in the 60s and 70s. Both water sources convene in the Interbasin Pipeline that gravity feeds into town. When flow rates and water quality are sufficient, the water is treated at our north reservoir filtration plant and pumped into town. You can see the sand filters on the right. When both flow rates and water quality are insufficient, the water is diverted to a vintage exposed reservoir and used for firefighting. We can also turn the water out down the Rio de Flag. On the left, you see that vintage reservoir. On the right, you see a helicopter dip during the museum fire in 2019. As many as a hundred and twenty helicopter dips were made during the museum fire. Water source was used for most swaddling fires over the last couple decades, the pipeline, museum, Schultz Tunnel fires. Also in the fall of 2023, we used the spring water from that exposed reservoir to fill Francis Short Pond after it had been cleaned and dredged. Another use since the early 90s has been Wildlife Drinkers. These are just representatives or examples of Wildlife Drinkers. Since the early 90s, we've had three Wildlife Drinkers along the pipeline. This is an example of one of them that's in pretty bad shape after the Schultz and pipeline fires. You can see burned debris on the side of the drinker. As in the early 90s, Arizona Game and Fish has proposed to reestablish the three drinkers that were used in the 90s with the addition of two more drinkers. You can see on the left, the project map from the Interbasin Waterline Restoration Project David Peterson presented on earlier with stars to give a rough location of these drinkers. And with that, I'll introduce Colby Walton with the Arizona Game and Fish.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I guess what I'm here today is just kind of give you what our plan is with these drinkers. I've been working on clearances for the last, I think since 2023 with the Forest Service. We've got NEPA done. I've done the in-house environmental clearances of the Game and Fish Department. So everything at this point is shovel-ready on our side of things. And so I've also reached out to the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation. They funded $76,000 for this project. The Arizona Elk Society is going to fund as well, and then the Game and Fish is going to pick up the rest. The plan, so this is the old drinkers. And the way these worked is they were, water would spill over after the water would get to half-pipe in the water line, and then it would, then it would fill up these drinkers, and then it'd be controlled by float. So what we're proposing now is we have a storage tank that's attached to the water line that's going to be controlled by a manual valve. And then the, the water in the storage tank is going to be monitored by a ranch bot, which is going to be, is going to use satellite signal to actually send the data to me on what the, the level of the water is in the storage tank. And this, once the storage tank is full, then that'll feed those Wildlife Drinkers that you saw pictures of earlier. Those are called Rainmakers 110. It's the, the standard Wildlife drinker that we use with the Game and Fish Department. And that'll be controlled by float. Ideally, in good years, you know, I'll, I'll go up there in the spring as soon as I have access to the road, open the valves, fill up the storage tanks, and then ideally I won't have to worry about it. 1,500 gallons should suffice if monsoon gets here on time. So if it doesn't, then we may have to fill up the storage tanks to kind of get us through until we get some snow on the ground. But that's the proposal. I appreciate y'all. I appreciate y'all's time. This has been a great project working with the city, the forest, and other credit groups. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Like Colby mentioned, all the infrastructure for the drinkers will be covered by the Arizona Game and Fish Department. The city will be providing an estimated amount of 100,000 gallons annually towards the drinkers. And the intergovernmental agreement spells out all the specifics and responsibilities. Moving forward with maintenance of the drinkers also will be covered by Arizona Game and Fish. Are there any questions?
Questions, counsel? Counsel member Aslan.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, any, all right, go ahead.
I move that we read Resolution Number 2025-06 by title only, and that we also adopt it, but we can wait until now.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Game and Fish Department and the City of Flagstaff for Wildlife Drinkers along the Interbasin Pipeline.
And would you say your next motion again?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-06.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Oh, we are going to take a 10-minute break now, so I will see everyone, we will all see everyone at seven. All right, we are getting started. 11B, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-07. Hello?
Hi. Good evening, mayor and counsel. My name is Chris Fair, and I'm a transportation planner in the engineering division with the city. I'm here tonight with a brief presentation with pertinent information to the IGA for the AZ Smart Match reimbursement on the Butler Avenue Complete Street Conversion Project. We'll start with some background information. In 2023, the City of Flagstaff was awarded just north of $9.6 million by FHWA to convert Butler Avenue from Milton Road to Sawmill Road to a complete street through the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. A couple features of this planned project is to install separated bike lanes along the length of the corridor, to implement protected intersections at Beaver Street and Butler, San Francisco and Butler, and Sawmill Road and Butler, and also to enhance the existing rapid flashing beacon crossing at Humphrey Street, and to implement another similar crossing at O'Leary Street. At the time of the award, we'll walk through the anticipated project costs. The federal grant award was for $9.6 million, or 80% of project costs. Therefore, the local share, or 20%, was $2.4 million. That represents the city's commitment for a total cost of $12 million. City staff then applied to ADOT's Arizona State Match Advantage for Rural Transportation or AZ Smart Fund to cover the local share of just over $2.4 million. This application was awarded. Thank you. So to review costs with the award, the federal share of 80% is still just north of $9.6 million. AZ Smart Match is covering the city's commitment of $2.4 million for the total cost of $12,4,989. A couple updates on the project. This resolution would authorize the City of Flagstaff to enter the IGA with ADOT, and the city is currently preparing to issue an RSOQ for design and environmental consulting services. I'll wrap up with this proposed cross-section of what Butler Avenue might look like in an ideal scenario. You can see the separated bike paths, which is one of the main big features of this project, which we're very excited about. So with that, I will look for any questions.
Thanks so much. Counsel, questions? Counsel member Spence.
Thank you, mayor. How much purchase of private property along this enhanced route, how much private property will have to be purchased and/or condemned under public domain?
Thank you, council member. So we have 15% concept plans of the project. There's no commitments on right-of-way acquisitions at this time. However, the two that were suggested were minimal, if that answers your question.
Counsel, additional questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move that we read Resolution Number 2025-07 by title only.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the state of Arizona and the City of Flagstaff for the Arizona State Match Advantage for Rural Transportation AZ Smart Fund Award.
Thank you. And a motion to adopt?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, 11C, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-10 and ordinance Number 2025-04.
All right, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, counsel. Ed Chankstone, section director. Today will be Today we'll be discussing the revision of the Stormwater Management Design Manual. This will be an update from the existing manuals dated in 2009. So the purpose of this is to clarify code, simplify code, as well as we update to more recent standards across the industry. I will not be presenting this, thankfully, today. Rick Schuler behind me with Woodson Ardua will be our consultant going through these slides. And then Doug Slouver is our senior project manager in Stormwater, giving the city portion of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Daggett and Vice Mayor Sweet and all the members of the I'm here to give you a little bit of background on what we've been working on as far as writing this new manual for the stormwater management for City of Flagstaff. And objectives, I'd like to just go through some of the scoping we did briefly, basis of the manual, the overall intent, our peer review and comment period. Briefly on some manual revisions, not too deep in detail on that, and turning it over then for discussion or questions. And ultimately, for first read of ordinance number 2025-04 and potentially adopt in resolution. So the first thing we did and worked with staff in that is to look at the manual that was dated 2009. So it had been some time since this was updated. And our purpose there was to try and identify, you know, desired changes, deficiencies, and things that could definitely need some updating. There were a lot of in-depth design features that can be found in other areas. And those were one of the main things we were trying to target as we were our goal of simplifying the manual. Once we did that, we talked about, well, how are we going to do this, come up with a new manual? Should we try and edit the existing manual? That was going to be a pretty big lift. There were going to have to be a lot of edits within that manual to get it up to date. So then we thought about, should we create a whole new manual? Again, a pretty big lift. And ultimately, we decided that we didn't need to start from pure ground zero. There's a lot of manuals out there that we could adopt to this manual and use as a basis. And so that seemed to be the most efficient way to move forward and get this manual to the state that we wanted it to be. And that is ultimately what we did. We adopted some other agencies' manuals and adapted that for our Flagstaff community. And interestingly enough, the City of Flagstaff manual in 2009 version was basically adopted by Coconino County for their manual. And more recently, they had gone through and revised that manual in 2020. Well, we ended up then building on their work from 2020 to come up with City of Flagstaff Manual 2025. So that's how it kind of cycled back. And we didn't adopt all of the manual from the county. We definitely had specific adaptations for Flagstaff, the community here. We also looked to more Arizona-based other manuals and ended up also adopting, as part of this 2025 manual, the Flood Control District, Maricopa County Drainage and Design Manual for specifically for hydraulics. Very robust and provided all the other items that we would need without having to be in a manual that we wanted to be more this size. However, hydrology being quite different than Maricopa County, we kept and sort of wrote that more regionally specific to Flagstaff. There are references in there from other agencies that, you know, that can be built on without having to write that all into our manual. So the intent was definitely to update to more current engineering standards and methods and update some drainage policies, standards and definitions, and design procedures, which have changed in our industry from 2009 and continue to do so. Goals were, I feel, well outlined in your staff report, but one of the main goals was to simplify the manual, make it more concise, user-friendly, and utilize the other references as needed. So we came up with a draft version and released that out to a group of our peers, over 30 participants that are local here at a Flagstaff, engineers, hydrologists, and people like that that are all part of our kind of tight-knit community here that do drainage and hydrology and things in Flagstaff. That was about a year ago, and it was out for almost a month, and we ended up extending that and finished that review period in April of 2024. We received many comments. In fact, they, I believe, numbered in nearly 200 comments. So we felt that the manual was looked at, and we were able to receive those comments, consider them, and incorporate them in many cases. So once that was completed, the manual went to the Water Commission to introduce it to them. Not a great amount of discussion, but they were brought up to speed on it. And finally, that was open for public comment at large from September 20th, 2024, through the end of October. And at that point, no additional comments were received. Things that are still applicable in previous code in that were unchanged, and that still is known. One of the main ones is Title 13, which is the Engineering Design Standards and Specializations. So it's important to note that the new manual is Chapter 8 of that Title 13. There also is a floodplain use permit process, and that's part of the floodplain ordinance, which is Title 12. Other driving regulations and guidelines that deal with floodplains are still in place and used heavily, and that's FEMA regulations and the National Floodplain Insurance Program. The other item that remains in effect from, I believe, also 2009, is the Low Impact Development Specific manual revisions are not going to go into a lot of detail with this. However, I would like to just make a few points on that. And we started with the definitions, which is a typical move, and everything that is defined or used in the manual is now defined in the definitions. We worked on the introduction. This slide here is actually a comparison, 2009 versus the current 2025. So you can kind of get an idea of the changes we went through. General conditions and requirements, and that included adding some more sections, defining legal authority references, having a component in there for deviation from these adopted standards, because we did want the manual to be flexible. And, you know, there's many different ways to approach a lot of this engineering, and we wanted to give the stormwater director the discretion to allow some of those other things to happen as they made sense. So that's been put in as part of the general conditions. Drainage reports and plans was Chapter 2 in the old manual, is now simply drainage reports. We did remove a lot of the verbiage and requirements of the construction plan portions, which are really more applicable to those engineering standards that I mentioned previously. And you'll see a lot of this stated as the chapters reorganized and revised, and that's generally taking out really techniques that were really far into the weeds that can be found in other references. So that was part of our approach to simplify things. Floodplain requirements was pulled out as a separate chapter. It was included in Chapter 2 in the 2009 manual. A lot of that, again, is we are getting, you know, more robust techniques and modeling procedures as time goes on, and those are covered now in the manual. City of Flagstaff does have two administrative floodplains, which are not technically defined as FEMA floodplains, but they were added to the manual in this section and part of the requirements for projects in those two administrative floodplains you'll find in there now. Hydrology, as I mentioned before, we wanted to keep that as Flagstaff-specific as we could. The city has, Stormwater has been doing a lot of activities to try and calibrate, I would say, parameters and things to our local conditions. So we definitely wanted to build on that. We provided quick reference guides, again, to simplify things and help folks using the manual to get right to what they needed to get their jobs done. Hydraulics, as you can see here in 2009, was four or five chapters, and we've combined that all together into one, Chapter 5. And that was successful in referencing to the Flood Control District, Maricopa County, for the things that are not used on a daily basis. Those daily basis kind of things, we kept in here so they'd be readily available, but simplified in this manual, and people can go to these other references then. So that, and then Chapter 9, previously with low impact development, that is just been clarified some as Chapter 6. That was a 2009 manual that was implementing, for the first time, these low impact development criteria, and it would talk about during the first year of this, the second year, and so forth. So that's, we're all past that now, so it's now just in its final state. Clarified those types of policies, and that includes the rainwater harvesting component of low impact development. Chapters 7 and 8 regarding erosion hazards and erosion and sediment control are very much the same. Not a lot of change there. Same with, well, actually, the energy dissipators was really kind of deep down in the weeds, so we removed that, and that has now been handled by references to other design manuals. Couple important new additions to the 2025 manual are, is a section about burned watershed and post-water wildfire flooding. You know, it had been since the 70s that we had a major fire, like we've had several of recently. So this is an important component that's now in the storm manual, and that is providing parameters and guidelines for projects that occur downstream of these burned areas. And finally, the last chapter, Two-Dimensional Flood Modeling, which is kind of an addition to the manual that's been based on the fact that our industry has been moving into more robust modeling techniques in that, and from 1D, one-dimensional techniques to two-dimensional flood modeling in that, and providing guidance and parameters for those uses as well. And I would add that, you know, we kept an eye on resiliency in things as we were writing this manual and that, and it's one of the reasons why we came up with and added the burned watershed and post-wildfire flooding chapter, is to improve that situation, to keep the low impact development criteria. That is definitely online with the resiliency needs that we have, providing the use of those local, more local studies and coming up with more of these equations that can be used to come up with flow rates as a check to these models. So we tried to keep those as components. But any questions or discussion?
Councilmember Spence.
Yeah, I have two things. First of all, you mentioned you want your manual to be flexible. I hope you're considering a paperback production instead of a hardback. Seriously, could you go back to Chapter 6 of the 2025 proposal manual? Under low impact development, where you mentioned rainwater, is there, just for people that might not know this, stormwater starts as rain falling on the surfaces, and when the rain falls on the roof of a house or an industrial building, you've got a chance to collect that water before it hits the stormwater sewers or before it erodes the surface of the ground. Is there anything in your 2025 manual that restricts or constricts a building owner from collecting the rainwater that falls on their own residential or commercial roof, assuming, of course, if they go to the trouble to collect it, that it'll be used for some productive purpose, like watering plants or reuse?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Spence. Rainwater harvesting is a requirement for new projects, and exceptions to that would only be where the project would use complete landscape palette of drought-tolerant species that would require, you know, less irrigation in that, while at the same time using more passive techniques of capturing the water and the rainwater and diverting it to these landscaped areas. As opposed to without... As opposed to without those drought-tolerant species, you're required to do active rainwater harvesting, meaning into tanks and that, and then to irrigation systems and that. So there's sort of two options there.
Okay. I just want to be clear on the verbiage here. You just mentioned that it's a requirement for new developments, but my question is, is there anything that prohibits a landowner, a building owner, from collecting water that falls on their own roof from entering the stormwater system?
No, sir, there is not.
Thank you.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. On Chapters Nine and Ten, I think the questions kind of go together here. You talked about the burned watersheds and post-wildfire flooding. First question is, because you made reference to the county manual earlier, does this reconcile pretty well with policies that the county is currently following with respect to post-wildfire flooding? The topic has been one of a lot of revisitation between us and the Flood Control District. Good discussions, but just wanting to make sure we're a little bit on the same page. Second part of the question is on the flood modeling. I think I heard your comments that that would dovetail nicely with the models that we do utilize for flood forecasting, like with the J.E. Fuller and similar consultants. Thanks.
And I've been lucky enough to be involved in some of those efforts that the county is undertaking in these post-wildfire areas. And yes, the manual is very much in line. And in fact, a good share of the comments we received were about this subject. And a lot of them, quite frankly, came from J.E. Fuller as we got this all together. And that even gets down to the, you know, the final analysis of the no-adverse impact that requires us to not adversely impact property owners downstream with these projects. And the criteria are very, very similar with what the county is using. The second question about the flood modeling, yes, the two-dimensional flood modeling does encompass exactly those same models that the county is using, one of them being a model called Flow 2D. And so those are covered in that chapter.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Schenks. It, I just wanted to comment. I don't know what the old manual looks like too much, but I spent a good portion of my Friday taking a look at the revisions. And for somebody who's fairly new at this, it was easily digestible and fairly easily to understand. So I appreciate whatever you did to make it easy for somebody like myself to be able to go through it pretty quickly and have a better understanding of where I need to look at when it comes to these things that come before us in the dais in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Councilor Garcia. And yeah, looking at the 2009 manual, you're going to see all these strange graphs and things which really are available other places, and this is more get to the broader points and that. So, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you so much. Ed, did you have anything to add?
Other than thanking Rick for all his time over the last two years on this project, nothing to add at this time. This is much-needed. We are probably five years behind the times, at least, on this. So having a 2009 manual, we're very slow to react, unfortunately. So getting this revision in will be fantastic. It'll put us in place, I'm going to joke here a little bit, in place for the county to revise off of ours next. So we'll do the leapfrogging back and forth between the city and the county. So it is good, and it's good to get this updated with a lot of the new things that we're seeing in the last few years. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will entertain a motion to read the resolution.
Actually, I just had a quick comment. I appreciate Ed and Doug Slover and their patience with, they were ready to go with this quite some time ago. I had several questions about it due to the previous manual that was in place. Took quite a bit of legal research to get there, but thank you for your patience on that. They've done great work here.
Now I will entertain a motion to read the resolution by title only.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we read Resolution Number 2025-10 by title only.
It's our second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? City clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council designating the 2025 Stormwater Management Design Manual a public record.
Thank you. And a motion to read Ordinance 2025-04 by title only for the first time.
Mayor, I'll move to read Ordinance Number 2025-04 by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 12 Floodplanes by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2025 Stormwater Management Design Manual, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to 10, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-08.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor, sorry, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Sarah Langley. I'm serving as the city's Public Affairs Director. And tonight, I'm bringing before you a resolution for your approval, which would recognize that our current housing emergency in the City of Flagstaff is exacerbated by the proliferation of short-term rentals, or STRs, as I'll call them. And the resolution also urges the state of Arizona to address those impacts of short-term rentals and return local control to cities on this topic. I will pull up the resolution just to have it visible. Here it is. All right. So first, just to offer a very brief overview of short-term rentals or STRs. We have seen a proliferation of STRs in Arizona here over the past decade or so. And STRs can start to have a significant impact on smaller communities because they can start to take up what can be a sizable portion of the city's housing stock. Cities and towns currently have very limited ability to regulate short-term rentals due to state law. In 2016, the legislature passed SB 1350, which requires cities to allow short-term rentals in residential zones. And really, as soon as this happened back in 2016, cities began to kind of push back and push for the ability to better regulate short-term rentals. Over the past years, there have been some bills that passed that gave cities, for example, the ability to require contact information or to require a license. However, we haven't had any legislation passed that allows cities to regulate the number of short-term rentals in their communities. So that's a bit of background. Now let's take a look at the resolution at hand. A version of this resolution was first passed by the City of Sedona, and Sedona has then been encouraging other cities to pass a resolution that fits their context and their local situation. So the resolution essentially calls for the state legislature to return local controls to cities, towns, and counties. This would allow each city or town to decide what works best for their community in terms of if or how they want to regulate STRs. So it's important to note that this resolution does not mean that STRs would be further regulated in Flagstaff. We currently do not have that authority. It simply calls for local governments to be given that authority to regulate short-term rentals, however would work best for their community. In terms of how this resolution would be used, it's really just a lobbying tool or a tool that shows our state legislators how many cities and towns are impacted by short-term rentals and are advocating for more local control on the issue. So that's all I have. Mayor, I'll pass it back to you for your discussion.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah. I just wanted to speak on this because we did have a robust conversation with the Housing Commission on this, and wanted to just give voice to some of the considerations that came up during that conversation. I know that there were some who were expressing concern about what exactly this resolution meant, and so just wanted to reemphasize what Sarah stated there on this really just opening the door for action at the legislature and showing the support for that local control. It is not an attempt to circumvent those, the current existing regulations or lack thereof at the city level, but simply expressing our desire to be able to control our own communities and our own neighborhoods and ensure that the housing supply is meeting those needs and not resulting in a proliferation of short-term rentals. So just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions or comments?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment that I viewed online, the Housing Commission's meeting, and there was a really robust conversation around this, where it was pretty close on the split between the two sides. And I do side with the prevailing vote from the Housing Commission, but I think that there was points on each end that are worth, you know, considering when moving forward with this, as far as the short-term vacation rental owners and the people that they serve, as well as the ability for our own self to make sure that we can provide the adequate housing for our community. Thank you.
Councilmember House?
Mayor?
Sorry, Councilmember House, you indicated that you would like to make the motion, but we do have public comment. Thank you, Stacy. Mary Norton, sorry, Mary.
Hello again. I'm here and counsel. I'm Mary Norton, commenting as a citizen. I'm here to support this resolution, to give weight to the lobbying efforts urging the state to allow for local control of short-term rentals. The issues of noise, nuisance, number, and concentration of short-term rentals is very real in my neighborhood of Pinnacle Pines. I want to address from personal experience, the HOA point of view. I currently serve on our HOA's Community Relations and Governance Committee, which works on this issue. The only carve-out provided by that 2016 law was for HOAs who could regulate them with their CCNRs. However, unless CCNRs restrict short-term rentals at the time of writing, this carve-out has proven to be ineffective. Pinnacle Pines is a community of 208 townhomes completed in 2018, and we are at 20% short-term rentals. Our original CCNRs did not restrict them, and we had a voting threshold of 90%, making it impossible to even update and correct poorly-written boilerplate documents. In 2021, we finally sought judicial relief to lower our threshold to an acceptable 67%. As STRs escalated, we have been diligent in our efforts to mitigate the issues of short-term rentals by using our CCNRs, rules and regulations, city codes, and ordinances. But even so, the effects of living near homes that become hotels persists. And over the last two and a half years, with legal guidance, we sought two different votes to restrict and phase out short-term renting, even allowing for forms of exemption. While of those that voted were in favor of restricting, we couldn't reach that 67% total ownership passage. And there were rumblings of lawsuits based on Arizona Supreme Court case Calway versus Calabria that ruled unforeseen changes to CCNRs must have 100% passage. Many, many HOAs in Arizona are waiting for the Calway case to be challenged at the Supreme Court level to end that ridiculous ruling and precedence. So even in an HOA, we need your efforts. This resolution is just one tool. And I do want to add, I know that it's very well that new developments cannot by law be required or asked to restrict short-term rentals unless there's some opportunity for negotiations. However, we can all certainly set out very outward expectations and vocal hopes that new communities being built here do better and restrict at minimum non-owner-occupied short-term rentals in the name of truly producing housing for Flagstaff residents. And the side benefit is that we'll be redirecting support to our local hotel industry, especially the many new and renovated hotels and motels, as they will always bring in those BBB tourism tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. And one note about the taxation, short-term rentals are taxed, the property tax is at the residential level, whereas hotels have to pay the commercial tax, property tax, not talking about sales tax. So that's next up. All right. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that we read Resolution Number 2025-08 by title only.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council recognizing the housing emergency declared by Resolution Number 2020-66 is exacerbated by the proliferation of short-term rentals limiting housing stock available to Flagstaff residents, and urging the state legislature of the state of Arizona to address the impacts of short-term rentals on the supply of housing for Arizona residents.
And a motion to adopt, Councilmember House, would you like to do that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-08.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Sarah. Moving down to E, Use of the Council Initiative Fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stacy Salzberg, your Communication and Civic Engagement Director, and also your city clerk. We have had a request from Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Sweet that came up at our last meeting on a potential use of your Council Initiative Fund to support the Habitat for Humanity Blitz, Construction Blitz. I will let Vice Mayor Sweet speak to that request and looking for a motion if that is something that the council wishes to do.
Thank you, and thank you, Council, for hearing me. I know it's been a long night. So as Stacy mentioned, Habitat is holding a blitz build for the first 10 starter homes in Timber Sky, and it's going to be June 3 through June 12. There are 97 volunteers coming from all over the U.S., and they're donating not only their time, but also buying their flights, hotel rooms, and contributing to our BBB tax. So I'm asking the city council that we sponsor one of the days for food for the volunteers. In total, there will be 150 volunteers, and that includes out-of-town, out-of-state, and our local. I did reach out to Flagstaff Brewing Company, and they are willing to donate their time to help us grill burgers and dogs and...
Hot dogs.
Hot dogs. Not real dogs, sorry. Thanks for clarifying. There are other local restaurants sponsoring, including Bigfoot Barbecue, Aspen Deli, and Toasted Owl. And I would like one of us to be, or I would like the city council to be another sponsor. This has been a long time coming with this project, and I think we're all pretty excited to see this happen. It takes a village, and I would love for city council to be part of this. So I am asking for $1,000 from our Council Initiative Fund to go to one day of feeding the volunteers. And I know that sounds like a lot, but it is $6.66 per volunteer that I'm asking for. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
No questions. Vice Mayor Sweet, just thank you for bringing this forward. I would not say that that sounds like a lot. I was actually expecting that the ask might have been a little bit higher than that, so I am on board for this. And I guess my only question, and I don't know if you have an answer, is I've signed up for one of the volunteer days. I don't know if there are still spots available for others to sign up if they're interested or if they're at their capacity for volunteers for this. for this. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that, Councilmember House, and I am not sure. I just signed up myself recently to volunteer. I would recommend, if anyone's interested in volunteering, to email Eric at Habitat for Humanity. I do not have his email on me, but I will make sure by the end of this I can give that out publicly.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Vice Mayor Sweet. I think it's a good opportunity for us to get in there and help out with the Habitat for Humanity project. I recently signed up as well, and I was pretty happily surprised that you don't have to have like construction skills or anything like that. So I signed up just to distribute food and help out with the motivation.
Play guitar.
Mayor, I do have his email. Can I give that out?
Yes, please.
So if you would like to volunteer or have any more questions, you can email Eric, E-R-I-C, at H4HNaz.org.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan.
My family and I are signed up for the first several days of this build, very much support this. I think it's exactly what the council initiative fund is for.
Thank you. All right. So I can't remember whether we needed a motion to do this. Yes, can I get a motion to approve $1,000 for the Habitat for Humanity Blitz Home Build Volunteer Event?
I would be honored to make that motion, that we donate $1,000 from our council initiative fund for the Blitz Build, doing the 10 starter homes in Timber Sky, June 3 through June 12.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, great. And we have other identified initiatives. Were there additional projects?
Mayor, there weren't any additional projects, but we wanted to make sure it was agendized in a way that if you did have others that came forward, you had the room to do that.
All right. Counsel, any additional? Okay, thank you. So we will move on to item number 12, future agenda item requests. This is a fair request by Councilmember Spence. And so Councilmember Spence will give his reasoning for requesting this and will take public comment. And then at this meeting, we need three council members to indicate that they would like to move this forward to have a full discussion on an agenda. And with no discussion tonight, just if there are three members of the council who want to see this move forward. So, do we have some public comment? So Councilmember Spence, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like everyone to indulge me in just a moment as we go back to the beginning of our meeting, where I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With liberty and justice for all. With liberty and justice for all. We live in turbulent times with regard to migration, both legal and extralegal. There are federal statutes and an aggressive federal deportation initiative underway at this time to rid America of persons without legal status. There are also existing state statutes, as well as a bill pending in the Arizona Legislature, Senate Bill 1164, which has the nickname AZ ICE Act. And that bill, if it passes the House and does not get a governor's veto, would prohibit Arizona cities and towns from implementing policies that prevent the entities, such as the city, from cooperating with federal immigration authorities. So that state legislative initiative is moving through our own legislature. But in the meantime, we need to ask ourselves, what should we in Flagstaff do in this regard? And I am not asking, I am not asking for Flagstaff to violate any federal or state laws. Thank you, Sterling. We're not in the business to get the city of Flagstaff put in incarceration. Rather, I am proposing that we have a council discussion on how federal and state actions in this arena will affect Flagstaff and our residents. One such discussion could be regarding deputization of our local police force by ICE or Immigration and Naturalization Services, the federal agencies. They're going around the country deputizing local police departments to execute judicial warrants in people's homes, places of worship, healthcare facilities, and other venues where people might be trying to avoid the feds locking them up and carrying them away. So I will stop there and see if there's an appetite for having a discussion on this topic.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, we're going to take public comment. Phil Goldblatt.
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, and city council members, and by the way, thank you for your patience. I have here in my hand the entire text of Prop 314, which was approved by the voters of the state of Arizona, as well as the text of the analysis by Legislative Council of the state. There has been a lot of controversy on this immigration issue lately, and I believe firmly that it is not, however, an issue that should be further considered by really any city in Arizona. Well, you may ask, why do I say this? First, there should be no concern whatsoever that legal immigrants would not be safe in Flagstaff. Coconino County Sheriff Axland, whom I've spoken with personally, and most other Arizona county sheriffs have agreed that until the similar Texas law SB4 is settled law, they would not enforce Prop 314. In fact, part of 314, Prop 314 itself, says that it may not be enforced in any manner until the SB4 law is in effect. But we all know that this Texas law is held up in the Fifth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals presently. So I need to ask counsel, why are you worried? We also know that the petition that is going around, supported by Ms. Putzova, would, if passed by this council in effect, make our city a sanctuary city that would attract illegal immigrants that include some of the worst criminals from other countries. This is not a good thing for the residents of our town. Furthermore, we also know that many federal grants and funding that our city now enjoys and needs may be lost if our city passes such an ordinance as the Putzova petition requests. The current administration is beginning to enforce the federal immigration laws that make it a federal crime to enter this country illegally. Prop 314 was passed largely because the federal government was not doing their job. So why should any of you council members not desire to support a legal law that was passed by both the federal government in the past and now by our state government? Laws that are legal should be upheld, not opposed. Further, I need not remind this council that the supremacy clause of our U.S. Constitution means that lower jurisdictions like our city are banned to uphold federal immigration law, not undermine it. For all of the above reasons, I would humbly ask this council to please not devote time or resources to basically a moot issue. And I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. B.J. Dempsey.
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, and council members, thank you. I'm here today to speak against the fair request by Councilmember Spence. During this meeting, I've heard a lot about abiding by law. I've heard about bankrupting the city, all of which would be put in jeopardy by having a discussion about how to have a workaround at a city level for federal laws that we have in place that could not only endanger funds coming into our city, but also endanger, so it could endanger state and federal funds from coming in here. As well as we have, I have a list that I'd be happy to share with you of 10 different federal laws that would be under this discussion to, that would be in violation, and it would be a discussion that would be aimed at skirting the laws and giving people advice on how to possibly work around to laws that have not only been voter-approved, but also passed by state and federal authorities. First of all, we have federal funding. Our current Department of Justice has vowed to stop all federal funding, and I don't think it's going to be a matter of sanctuary cities, immigrant safety laws. I noticed, Mr. Spence, Councilmember Spence, you decided to say legal and illegal immigration. There is no desire to deport legal immigrants in any way, shape, or form by anyone that I'm aware of. I could be wrong. Stopping federal funding into our state could be risky to all the members that voted as citizens to put the council forth before us. One of the state laws that I have right here that is very clear is Arizona Rights Statute 11-1051, where no official agency of the state, city, town, or other political division may limit or restrict enforcement of federal immigration laws. And in here, it does state that they could hold those who vote against that personally responsible, which would mean our city would be held responsible also. I know that I've heard, and I could be incorrect, and he can correct me, but in speaking with our new police chief, Sean Conley, they do not have the resources or finance available to actively enforce them, and we do not have a jail as a city. So it's something that the county would be looking to do, so please look out for our citizens that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. John Herring.
It's Joan.
He, but yeah, yes, I know, I know that.
No worries.
Are you on Rain Valley?
John Arrow?
No, no, okay, this is, it's John Herring.
Herring?
Yes. He left. All right. Hey, don't sit down. Don't sit down. Joan Arrow.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, Spence, Garcia, and House. It's a pleasure to see you all, and thank you for taking my comment. I'm speaking in favor of Councilmember Spence's motion to allow our city council and our community to have a discussion about this issue. I think previous comments that we've heard this evening have made points about laws that exist or laws that might be proposed, but to my knowledge, all that has been requested is a public discussion. And to me, as a community member here in Flagstaff since 2014, this issue is about people, about the people our community depends on for everything that we may take for granted. And those people in our community deserves an opportunity to discuss some of these points and how we, as a community of Flagstaff, might choose to move forward. But to cite federal and state laws, which may say this or may say that, as a reason why our community in a democratic society cannot exercise our First Amendment rights to free speech and open discussion is preposterous. I think a lot of our community members are feeling scared. A lot of us are worried about the rhetoric in Washington and what that means for us as a southwestern state. And as a state that I love very deeply, I know that we hold dear values, that we are indivisible as a nation, and that we deserve an opportunity for our community to have a good-faith discussion about how we might protect our neighbors and keep Flagstaff together from needless persecution. Because let's be real, our immigrant community in this country, they do the hard work that many of us don't want to do. And if you want to see fresh food in your grocery stores and eggs at a reasonable price, I think deporting the people who pick the food and do all the labor that makes our country possible is ridiculous. That's an opinion, but we should have a forum for our opinions to be discussed and for the city to make a plan for how we can ensure that the values we hold dear as a nation are reflected in our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Putzova.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, and council members. Thank you, Councilmember Spence, for hearing us. We got 1,500 Flagstaff residents who signed a petition asking you to pass immigrant safety ordinance because, as Joan said, people are afraid. And it's kind of interesting that, you know, in the past, this council took a position that the city should not get involved in federal issues. And so we're asking you to not get involved in federal issues and follow the same kind of logic you used in the spring of 2000, actually last spring, when you declined to pass the ceasefire resolution. And we're asking you to include in that immigrant safety ordinance three provisions. One is to not to use city resources for federal immigration enforcement. The second one is to put restrictions on data sharing, and you know very well that city collects immense amount of data about Flagstaff residents that can be used in all kinds of way. And then finally, to require the city departments and staff to be trained on compliance with that ordinance. So I hope you're going to hold a discussion. I hope you're going to cover potentially passing an ordinance like this, and I would like to ask you to expedite it. I know you will need four votes for that, but I want you to ask, to have that conversation about expediting it, because frankly, the city residents cannot wait for that discussion to happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Amy Martin.
Hello, and thank you so much for this time in this space. My name is Amy Martin. I am a photographer here in Flagstaff. I've been in Flagstaff since 1997, and I am here today because there are so many in this community that cannot be here out of the fact that they fear for their safety, sharing their identity. And I have so much to say, but what I'm going to do, I am an artist, and so I'm going to use, hold on one second. use -- hold on one second. One of the projects that I've done recently, I've been working with the undocumented community over the last eight years, and one of the projects that I have done is a storytelling project that gives a platform for those denied the chance to share their identity, to share their stories here. And so this project is called Todos Dignos, which means we are all dignified, we all deserve dignity. And so in this photograph, I invited these undocumented community members who are contributing so much to our community, the chance to use objects to let us know what their contributions are. And so here, we have a woman who cleans houses. She has her cleaning gloves on. But even more than that contribution of the work of cleaning people's homes here is she brought a heart, and that represents her love for this community. And I thought this was just, you know, this needs to be shared, what these neighbors are doing for our community. I do -- I've got one minute. Well, I was going to read her story, but I also have so much to say about this kind of legal-illegal space. So many of the people that I talked to were brought over when they were young, when they were two years old, when they were four years old. They really don't know any place other than our Flagstaff community. Some have been able to be approved for DACA, some haven't. I talked to a teacher in Killep this week, and she told me that her students are disappearing, that families are leaving Flagstaff. They are leaving our community out of fear, and they are going to, you know, worse, way worse conditions back in Mexico. And so I just hope that we can have this discussion. And this is so hard that we have to have this discussion without the people that this is directly affecting. But I want you to know that working with, you know, over these last eight years with so many people. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe Bader.
Mayor Daggett, members of the council, my name is Joe Bader. I live in Flagstaff. I'm going to read one of the stories that Amy was referring to from some of the folks in our community who are under attack now and are terrified of what's going to happen to their lives. This is about a carpenter who lives in town. He was brought by his mother from Durango, Mexico, to Phoenix, Arizona, the United States at age 10. He recently moved to Flagstaff to continue working construction and now works as a painter. I'm quoting him. "My mom brought us by herself when I was 10. I've been here for 20 years. There are four of us in my family. I was 10 years old when I came. She wanted to give her kids the best opportunities for themselves. She wanted the best for us. I began to work at 12 or 13 years old to help my mom. I was in school and working. I worked in construction before, but now I am a painter. I like it, and I learn fast. I am a good painter. That's why I continue to do it. I like it a lot. I like to do it so that the clients like it when I finish. I try to do the best I can. I like when they are happy with the work. I do. I see their joy. I don't do it for the money. I do it so that people are happy with their house. I got my associate's diploma in community college. I studied athletic training. I couldn't continue because it was really expensive. And it was when the laws became more strict. I graduated in May, but I would have had to pay triple to go to the university. People talk about how we don't speak the language from here. But the reason, because we might not speak the language, is that there are people with less resources that have not had an education. I would like to learn another language, but I am working. We, as immigrants, are people that are thankful for this country. It is an opportunity to have a better future. We came for nothing more but to work, not to take, only to work. We want to respect this country. We are not perfect, but we want to be members of the community and help this country." This man, like so many others, lives in this community, or they were living in this community. They deserve to stay here. They're struggling day-to-day to make a better life, and to demonize them is really unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen Waring.
My name is Gwen Waring, and I've been here for 50 years.
Gwen, you're going to have to --
50 years this year. Woo-hoo. I am reading this for someone who didn't feel safe enough to be here tonight to present this statement of hers. "I graduated in high school, was an excellent student. I had offers from U of A and NAU, and I couldn't take them. My parents had always saved money because they knew I would have to pay more money. But in my last year of high school, my stepdad was stopped and almost deported. He spent a month and a half in Eloy. When that happened, we had to sell everything. We sold our house, we sold our cars, and we took out loans to get him out. I know nothing good is going to happen. What worries me is my younger sister because she is going to live with the fear that one of her parents is going to be taken. It's very difficult for a little girl of six years to understand everything that is happening, but she knows. She understands that our father is here today and may be gone tomorrow. I had to drive to Phoenix with him, and those detention centers are horrible. I've gone to the immigration office in downtown Phoenix, and it's terrible. They don't let you go inside with them, and you see buses leaving with people. When I went down there, I saw a man waiting with his wife and his bag packed, and they knew. I have to look to my mom and sister for inspiration. My mom is the strong one, but when she's depressed, I know it. And when I am going through something, she worries about me when she has so many other things to worry about. If it were just for me, I couldn't continue forward, but it's for them. I'm doing everything to better myself because this is why my mom brought me to the United States, so that I could realize my life's dream. She left hers so that I could follow mine. I saw an article that talked about DACA privilege, and it suggests that we all -- that we're all legal and protected, but it's not like that. There's a lot of fear not knowing whether we are protected. They tell us to trust the police, but they're the ones that are putting us in jail. I want to be a nurse to help." Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Lebarsky.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am appreciative of this chance to speak, especially as we are in the midst of a period of political repression and a campaign of fear that is being promulgated by our federal government. The primary target is our immigrant population. Borders czar Tom Homan, who has resumed the policy of putting families with children in detention centers, recently advocated for the arrest of elected U.S. leaders who opposed Donald Trump's policies on migrants. He asked, "Why can't I arrest a mayor or a governor who doesn't cooperate with my agency?" The fact that he doesn't know the answer should frighten us. And so should the fact that his agency is operating without guardrails. An example: German citizen Jessica Bruschel is right now fighting to be released from immigration and detention after being taken into custody at the border last month. She had her German passport, confirmation of her visa waiver to enter the country, and a copy of her return ticket back to Berlin, and was still detained and has been in prison for the past month. Another example: detained migrants, many of them, many of whom are seeking asylum, are being held in federal prisons in Atlanta, Philadelphia, Miami, Leavenworth, Kansas, and Los Angeles, California. Prison staff are unsure of how to treat them and how best to keep them separate from other prisoners. Because they don't, they aren't regular inmates, they can't be entered into the system to use the phones or contact their families. They haven't been charged or convicted, but they are being put into our very troubled federal prison system. One more example: The federal government has given license for ICE to go into our public schools and hospitals. Imagine the terror of a young child or a person in health crisis being confronted by immigration agents. Though we may hold different opinions on this issue, all of us are being bullied by a federal government that threatens to withhold funding to any municipality that disagrees with its highly controversial policies. We must speak out against the abuse that is underway in our country. I thank Councilman Spence for his fair proposal. In light of current federal deportation practices, we need to talk publicly and together about human dignity and human rights. I urge you to place this fair item on the agenda." Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Silver.
Hello, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I'm speaking in support of Councilman Spence's fair item. I'd like to remind us of a quote by Martin Neumoller. "First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Block.
Hello again, mayor, vice mayor, council. I did not come tonight prepared to speak on this, but when I saw two people get up and speak about the laws of our country, I was incensed because we are living in a time when the laws of our country are being broken every day at the highest levels. I am a retired federal employee, and what is happening to the federal employees is disgusting. My family came here escaping the potato famine. Most of them came as indentured servants. That was a while ago. I am the first generation to have gone to college and become a professional. That is what people are looking for. They are looking for lives, and they are being squashed. Please give this a fair hearing."
Thank you. Teresa Tally.
Teresa Talent, like a very talented person. Sometimes. Thank you for hearing me on short notice. I just put the card in, and I appreciate my chance to speak. I didn't come prepared to speak, but after hearing all this, the most important thing that I want to say is for a discussion on this that's going to go out through the city of Flagstaff and the county around it can be the most divisive thing that can happen in our area. You can hear that there's real strong emotions that don't agree with our current president and our current -- and he was elected because of this issue. They don't like the way things are going in the government. And then you have the other side, who very much want to see this problem solved and get the gangbangers out of here and get a handle on the drugs and the fentanyl. And these people are never going to see eye to eye. And so by having a bigger public forum, it's going to get ugly. Neighbors are going to turn against neighbors, family members are going to turn against family members. And I'll give you three quick points of their cutesy stories on real stories. I'm from Maryvale. My neighbors were safe houses, and we saw two vans pull up with 30 little bitty kids under three years old hushed into the safe house. There was only men in that safe house. Mom called the police. They're like, "We can't do anything. Go in your house and lock the door." My cousin, who was supposed to retire with me, we're supposed to be fishing, he got killed by an illegal dreamer, one of those little kids that was brought here who wanted to be a gangbanger, bragged all day about drinking, took off through the neighborhood at night, going 60-plus miles an hour with three drunk teenage girls in his car, hit my cousin's car, killed him, put my cousin's daughter in the hospital. The three girls were thrown from his car, and he took off running. And the neighbors chased him down and caught him, and he's about to get out of prison. And is ICE going to pick him up? Or they're going to go, "Oh, well, you served your time. Go hit the streets again." And the third thing is my ambulance career was ruined because six illegals in a truck were going the wrong way, down a wrong-way street, one-way street. They came up, they T-boned me, we rolled several times, brand-new ambulance, had to call the boss, second day on the road, screwed up my neck, screwed up my back, and ruined my ambulance career. You know, they're not all sweet little kids that want to work in the field. Excuse me, these are dangerous people. And more than that is just the division that it's going to cause in our community. It's not legal. We don't need to even talk about being a sanctuary city. We need to put that to rest and leave it alone, and that's what I pray for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jill Stevenson.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and council members, and thank you, Councilmember Spence, for bringing this issue forward. This is not something we can ignore. The majority of immigrants are law-abiding citizens contributing to our country. There are exceptions, just like there are exceptions in any group of people. We are merely hoping that the council will discuss this issue that is so severely affecting our friends and neighbors, who we need. You know, I mean, it's very basic. Many immigrants are doing the kinds of jobs that most, quote, "Americans" do not want to dirty their hands with. We need them. They want to be here. And as I mentioned, most of them are law-abiding citizens trying to make a better life for themselves and their families. So please do include this as quickly as you can in one of your future agendas. This is a discussion we need to have. Better to bring this out in the open than try to hide this and say everything's bad or everything's going to be all right. No, we need to talk about it. So thank you very much for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Kit Alvarez.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me. This is my first time here, so I'll keep this short. I'm a longtime resident, and I think our community has every right to discuss this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Hutner.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Thomas Hutner. I have been a resident of Flagstaff for one month. I recently got out of the Coast Guard after nine years of active duty. For eight years, I was primarily in charge of planning, coordinating, and executing search and rescue operations, but also any operations that involved law enforcement officers that were given federal rights under the U.S. Code. I believe it's 11 subsection. You'd be pulling my brain too hard for that one. But point being, in order to be a steward of life through my search and rescue operations, I first had to be a steward of the Constitution. I remember a case we had when 12 drunk people on a party boat outside of Chicago were trying to leave, and they had some complaints against them, but no hard evidence that could lead to an arrest. Our secret agent or special agent from Coast Guard Investigative Services told the petty officer third class to stop that boat, hold them there. This was an officer, a military officer, giving an order. The BM3 said, "Yeah, I'm not going to be violating the Constitution today." The point being that I have worked with law enforcement officers that know the Constitution, and they know that it protects the people. I am going to guarantee you that when ICE does come in, it will be without regard to that safety for documented or undocumented. It will not matter. and they know that it protects the people. I am going to guarantee you that when ICE does come in, it will be without regard to that safety for documented or undocumented. It will not matter. I can tell you that if I leave my license at home and I speak the language that my mother taught me, since I am, in addition to being a third-generation veteran, I'm a second-generation Mexican-American. There's a saying we have, which is "ni de aqui, ni de allá," which means, "I'm not from here, but I'm also not from over there." Being a veteran, being of mixed heritage, that really rings true. When you are "ni de aqui, ni de allá," you rely on your community, because you give in and you help them, and you expect that in return. And that's not just for undocumented people. That's for those of us who are fifth-generation Americans, who are respected members of our community. I am going to guarantee you that ICE, even though we can talk about how they are operating within the law legally, they will not only mutate that Constitution, but there will be adverse small infractions against the Constitution. And it will seem like, "Oh, well, they're already here. We got extra federal funding from them. Yeah, we'll put up with the small constitutional breakages." What's going to happen when it's the large ones? During my eight years, I counted up the number of times that my planning led to a saved human life. It was 109. I never counted the amounts of lives that I lost under my operations, because even if it was one, it was our belief that one person dying is worth everything else. The ends do not justify the means, and that's what I learned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is the end of our public comment. I don't see any online. And again, we're looking for a show of hands to move this forward for a discussion, and I think that there are several of us up here who would love to speak, and I would just invite the public to contact us. Either way, contact us after the meeting. Not tonight, but email us, and we can set up a meeting. Yes?
I, with all due respect, this is a no-way discussion, but I feel I have the right to briefly provide an explanation and context for the way that I'm going to give direction.
Okay. Sterling.
I'll either do it now or during "To From" in 90 seconds. And obviously, mayor, that's your call. It's under the rules of procedure. When fairs first come to the council, it's for determination of whether there are three or more council members that support the fair. There has not been discussion, and discussion isn't provided for in the rules, nor explanatory statements typically in the past. That said, ultimately, you're the chair, and those rules, I will note, were approved by council. So I know that some have expressed an interest in making those statements. I'll leave that to you, mayor.
Thanks, Sterling. Go ahead and do it during "To From," and we'll...
Thank you. That's your discretion, and I respect it.
Thank you. All right. So, we're looking for a show of hands. Three who want to move this forward. I don't see anything from Councilmember House, so we have two, and it does not move forward. Thank you. Next up, we have open call to the public. Then after that, we have informational items, "To From," mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to follow suit with...
Oh, because if you're interested in hearing my reasoning, please stay.
I'll let you go first.
No, go ahead, Councilmember Matthews.
Well, I was just going to also explain why I'm not moving this forward. It was really evident tonight that it's very emotionally charged, and we can't do anything about it. We took an oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws, whether we like them or not. I grew up, my kids grew up, in a farming community with migrant workers. I mean, that's all my kids knew. That was their friends. I'm always very supportive of them, and they do work on backbreaking jobs that nobody else would do. I'm supportive of that. But that doesn't really change the fact that this is a subject that is highly emotionally charged, and it's something we cannot legally do anything about. Can you imagine, if we put this on the agenda, how many, probably hundreds of people, would be here, sharing their heart-wrenching stories? And at the end of the day, we do nothing about it. We can't. Almost every single one that came here wanted action. They wanted us to do something. And they're just going to get disappointed after hours upon hours of conversation. So I appreciate being able to share that. Not that I'm not sympathetic. I am. You know, I worry about people, children, and innocents getting swept up in this, but this is not our, this is not within our authority.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Madam mayor, respectfully, I will wait till next week to share my "To From." Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to use this opportunity to say that I am a strong and stalwart friend of the immigrant community. I speak Spanish. I lived in a rural Spanish-speaking cloud forest community for three years. I organized a diocesan-wide Catholic immigration support network for the city of Sacramento under Bishop Jaime Soto. I am very concerned by the state of affairs that prompted this fair and concerned for those in our Flagstaff neighborhoods who are most affected. But I firmly believe there are two ways to approach this problem as a council member. A non-binding resolution will do nothing but poke a bear. We can be loud, or we can be effective. So I will not be supporting the fair. That's all.
Thank you, council member. Vice mayor.
Thank you, and I'll make mine short. I believe that this conversation can happen and should happen in the community, and I believe it is happening. And I'm just going to leave it at that. I am supportive of the discussion among our community members. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, mayor. I will just follow suit of my fellow council members and just state that I do want to thank Councilmember Spence for bringing the prior discussion forward and acknowledge that this is a deep concern that many in our community share regarding the treatment of our migrant community, particularly in light of current state and federal actions on deportation. And I share that concern about the impacts these policies may have on our neighbors, friends, and local families. I also recognize that people are scared. I think we heard that a lot this evening. And there's so much uncertainty surrounding these policies that it's causing real fear in our community, and I don't take that lightly. However, I think it's important for us to remember that we need to be thoughtful in our response and not reactive in a way that may cause unintended harm. That's one thing I don't think that I heard in some of the conversation tonight. There's so much that is evolving in the current legal landscape at the state level, at the federal level, and so forth, that I worry that conversations that we're having could be seen as standing in direct opposition to legislation in a way that may not serve our community's best interests. And more importantly, I fear that bringing heightened attention to some of these issues in a public forum could unintentionally place the very people we're seeking to support at greater risk, adding to the fear and uncertainty that they are already experiencing. I also want to acknowledge, as Councilmember, or excuse me, as Vice Mayor Sweet did, that there is incredible advocacy and community organization happening already that's doing essential work in this space. I am engaged with some of them. I will continue to be engaged with some of them, and I appreciate that these groups are deeply engaged with impacted individuals, providing resources and supports in a way that are likely much more effective and appropriate than a discussion from the dais. So while I always value open dialogue, I believe in this case, deferring to those directly engaged in this work is the best way that we can contribute to our community's safety and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence.
Nothing further.
I think that my colleagues up here have been very articulate. People are scared, and we have heard from a number of them this evening. And conversations are happening. I just want to emphasize that, that conversations are happening. And as Councilmember House said, many of us are involved in those conversations. And we do have, we do have legal restraints. And as Councilmember Matthews said, a further discussion of this would elicit a lot of public comment, as we know, and would not lead to the outcome that people would like to see, or that a number of people would like to see. And there are more effective ways to address the issue, and those are underway. So I just want to thank the public for coming out and speaking to us. I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the grace to uphold our policies and procedures. This is one of those times where you do it for one, and then you end up having to do it for all. So I'm sorry of this inelegant way of handling comments, but thank you, everyone, for how articulate you were this evening. City manager.
Nothing for me. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right, we're adjourned.